Those of you that are here, if you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form available at the entrance and present it to the City Clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. At this time, I will convene the City Council and City Council as successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency for the City of Grand Terrace for regular meeting of April 10th, Tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Matt Pope of the Grand View Baptist Church, and our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Lieutenant Doug Wolfe of the San Bernardino County Sheriff Department. If you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we ask that your presence will draw near with us this evening as the commencement of this meeting takes place. We ask, Father, that you will provide the wisdom necessary for every person in attendance through the topics that will be discussed and for the decisions that will be made tonight. God, as with the numerous leaders of our country, we ask that you will be with every leader that is here, for their efforts are vital and their accountability is solely to you. Show us your guidance, show us your love, show us your grace, show us your mercy. Above all, God, show us your glory, because that is the essence of your character and of which everything falls under. We thank you for this time together, and let it be a time not only to employ business discussion, but a time to worship you through discussion, giving you all the praise and the glory you deserve. We thank you, Father, for your providence and unceasing favor, in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Lieutenant. Madam City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Henderson?
Present.
Councilmember Hussey?
Present.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor Protem Robles?
Present.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll start tonight with some special presentations. Our first one is a proclamation for Child Abuse Awareness Month, and tonight we have Jeanette Zito, who is the staff analyst for Children's Network, and she will be receiving this proclamation if you come to the lectern. Tonight, Councilmember Henderson will be reading our proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the City of Grand Terrace Proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas all children have the right to receive the care, protection, and guidance a family provides to be free from harm and to have their physical, emotional, educational needs met, state and federal governments have proclaimed April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month for the purpose of promoting community involvement in the prevention of child abuse. And whereas more than 33,000 children in San Bernardino County were referred to Children's Family Services for suspected child abuse and neglect in 2017, and whereas the adverse childhood experiences study conducted by Doctors Vincent J. Felitti and Robert F. Anda demonstrates long-term health social, excuse me, long-term health, social, and economic risks that result from childhood trauma. And whereas, as the prevention of child abuse requires rigorous solutions, energy, strength, determination, and commitment from concerned citizens in the entire community, the County of San Bernardino provides services and professionals in the field of child abuse who are dedicated, compassionate, and skilled in the prevention of child abuse. And whereas with the Blue Ribbon as the international symbol for child abuse prevention, San Bernardino County Children's Network, in partnership with the San Bernardino County Board of Supervisors, the member agencies of the San Bernardino County's Children's Policy Council and Child Abuse Prevention Committee have planned a Blue Ribbon Campaign, the 20th Annual Shine a Light on Child Abuse Awards Breakfast during the month of April to increase awareness of child abuse. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Darcy Magna Bo, Mayor of the City of Grand Terrace, along with my fellow council members proclaim the month of April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Grand Terrace, and encourage citizens, organizations, schools, nonprofits, businesses, and other entities in the community to engage in activities and events that assist in efforts to prevent child abuse and provide for children's physical, emotional, and developable developmental needs presented this 10th day of April 2018.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Ms. Zito, would you like to say a few words about your organization?
Thank you. First of all, thank you so much, Madam Mayor, and as well as the esteemed council members for having us here today and to proclaim April as Child Abuse Awareness Month in this great city of Grand Terrace. We really appreciate this. We appreciate the awareness and that will help towards prevention. You mentioned a few statistics. In the county of San Bernardino, 32,000, over 32,000 referrals were made for child abuse, and that's an average of 2,600 per month. Also, in this city, there are 120 of those were from this city, and so it's important to be aware. It's important to know that child abuse includes physical abuse, emotional abuse, sexual abuse, as well as neglect. And we really appreciate you proclaiming it today. And just remember, if you suspect child abuse, it's very easy to call. Actually, the easiest way to report child abuse is to call 211, and they'll direct you immediately to the hotline. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. We would like to have a picture with you in the council over here, if you would, and if I could get my colleagues to join us over there. Said I want to clap, but it feels awkward because it's child abuse, but I'll clap for your organization and all the good that they're doing. And I'll ask if my colleagues want to say anything at this point. Councilmember Hussey?
You know, I thank you for all your hard work and everybody who's in that organization that helps children. It's, you know, it's sad that children are being abused, extorted, and it's unfortunate when you read the news, you hear about it every day, and you can't turn a blind eye. And I ask the residents, too, if you see something, please report it, you know, that child's crying out for help, and they've been so mentally and physically abused, they don't know who can help them, even in school. So, I just thank you for taking the time out and caring for our children, and the organizations in my prayers. God bless.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I want to say that I know this is a very difficult job and has a requirement of people that have high tolerance and dedication to continue on doing this kind of work, and by the fact that you've taken the time during an evening, you know, from work to be here with us and to illuminate on this issue, you know, it shows your dedication, is reflection on your organization, and I thank you.
Councilmember Wilson?
Nothing touches my heart as hard, but the antithesis is, is that someone is there, and I wish you Godspeed. My daughter's a family therapist, and though she has to be confidential, you can see the, sometimes, the pain in her eyes. And let's just hope that we break the cycle. Thank you.
All right. Thank you again for being here and for doing the work that you do. And our second presentation tonight is to DMV Donate Life. We have with us Suzanne and Lexi Hollander, who will be accepting the proclamation if you'll come up to the lectern, and we have Councilmember Wilson, who will read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Grand Terrace Proclamation, DMV slash Donate Life California. Whereas organ, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. Whereas more than 114,000 individuals nationwide, and more than 21,000 in California, are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and on average, 20 people die each day while waiting due to the shortage of donated organs. Whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic and African-American communities. Whereas more than 600,000 units of blood per year are needed to meet the need in California. Whereas at any given time, 6,000 patients are in need of volunteer marrow donors. Whereas a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives. Donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others, and a single blood donation can help three people in need. Whereas millions of lives each year are saved and healed by donors of organs, tissues, marrow, and blood. Whereas the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age or medical condition. Whereas over 14 million Californians have signed up with the state-authorized Donate Life California donor registry to ensure their wishes to be organ, eye, and tissue donors are honored. Whereas California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California donor registry when applying for or renewing their driver's licenses or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Darcy Magna Bo, Mayor of the City of Grand Terrace, along with my fellow council members proclaim the month of April 2018 as DMV slash Donate Life California Month in the City of Grand Terrace, and encourage all Californians to check yes when applying for renewing their driver's license or ID card, or by signing up at www.donatelifeCalifornia.org, or www.dunvidaCalifornia.org, presented this 10th day of April 2018.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. All right. We have two representatives. Ms. Hollander, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I want to thank you very much for supporting organ donation and proclaiming April as Donate Life Month. In 2002, my daughter Alexis was born with a congenital heart defect, and her best chance of survival was to receive a heart transplant. So, she was listed at Loma Linda, waited a very long six months, and thankfully received her donor from a little boy who passed away in San Jose, from SIDS. So, luckily, because of organ donation, my daughter is here with us almost 16 years later, doing awesome, doing great. And, yeah, I want to thank you guys very much. We're very much appreciative of the proclamation and...
Well, thank you so much for being here and for the work that you're doing for this organization, and Lexi, we're happy to have you here tonight. If you would, may we have a picture with you?
Yes, of course.
All right. How about some applause for the hall? And opportunity to say something if you'd like. Councilmember Hussey?
Well, young lady, I told you it wasn't going to be that bad, huh? Biggest smile. I know your parents are, you know, and thank the parents of the little boy who gave you a second chance, and thank everybody who donates, you know, it's a hard decision to make, but, you know, you're going to help somebody. I'm also, I got a cadaver bone in my neck, and, you know, so I got to check yes, like I told you, on my driver's license, but thank you, you're looking good, and congratulations. Thank you for all your wonderful work you're doing.
Mayor Protem?
I just want to thank you for coming out tonight, because you're demonstrating a real person who has benefited from this program, you're absolutely beautiful young lady. It just gave me a lot of chills to hear your testimony, and I just thank you for being here tonight and sharing this with us. Thank you.
All right. Again, thank you, and very happy that you're here with your beautiful smile, and I think you're a great representative for the organization. You show what a simple gift can do, and I know it is a hard decision for people to make, but I think that you're one that can convince people that it's worthwhile. So, again, thank you for being here tonight, and thank you to your mother and father for being here as well. All right. And our last presentation is from Southern California Edison. It's a reliability report, so I'll introduce Mark Cloud, the Southern California Edison Governmental Affairs Representative, and he'll introduce his team.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here today to go over, give you a brief overview of your 2018 reliability report. Thank you for that. That's awesome. Your reliability report for the year, which, of course, looks back a year ago, looks at last year, and we're going to, before I begin, though, we also have with us here tonight, Jim Harris, who is the district manager out of our Redlands office. There's Jim. We also have Dana Purcell, and she manages permits for the company in the area. So, anytime we need permits, which is often, we work closely with the cities to get those permits, and Dana and her team do that very well. So, tonight, we'll be talking about reliability here in the City of Grand Terrace, and I know this is a topic of interest, so we're going to go over some of the numbers that we track every year and the causes behind some outages that we experience here in Grand Terrace. Let's go over that. Before we can begin, before we get into that, I'd like to give you a brief overview of where the company is going over the next few years. We are not alone in this. A lot of other utilities have to do this, too. We are here in Southern California at this juncture in our history, facing the time where we need to actually begin doing some upgrades to the system, because, in part, the system was built to service, a lot of it was built here to service the post-war baby boom, and of course, I'm talking about World War II, so it goes back decades. A lot of our equipment is from that era. Some of it's newer, a lot of it's newer in some cases, and we've maintained our system very well over the last several decades. But in the industry, a lot of people refer to the electric grid here in America as America's oldest machine, and that's in part because, well, we've been providing power on some of this infrastructure for over 100 years. And here in California, a lot of it's newer than that, but it is at a point where we need to actually retire and replace a lot of this equipment. So, that's the first cause behind the company's overarching push toward modernizing the grid. We call it grid mod for short, grid modernization. So, we're going to be pouring, as you can see on this slide, more than $13 billion into our system over the next few years to account for some of this aging infrastructure. So, that's going to, we know, once these changes are made, improve reliability throughout our system. So, that's one trend that's happening. The other trend is the utility industry is becoming decentralized. I don't want to bore you, but I will give you a brief history lesson. You probably all already know this. The electric utility industry for the last 100 years or so has been centralized. In other words, greenhouse gas-based, or rather fossil-fuel-based power was generated out of the area, oftentimes out of the state, and transmitted along high-capacity transmission lines into our local communities. It was very centralized. Now, we're working at, we're looking at, and need to prepare for a decentralized, or what we call a distributed, energy resource grid, meaning power is coming less and less from those single sources of power out of the state, and they're coming more from, these days, from a very distributed network of power providers, and that includes a wind farm in Tehachapi or a solar farm in the desert. It includes even the rooftop solar that you might have on your roof at home or business. Your, once you rely, or once you use up all the power you need for the month, if you have a solar system. Show of hands, anybody have solar in this room? Any on the dais have solar? Once you provide enough power for yourself, you begin, if you have an agreement with us, to send that power back to the grid to benefit your neighbors, essentially, and we pay you for that. We compensate you for that. It's called the net energy metering agreement. So, that is new, relatively, in terms of how long the system's been around. That technology or that agreement, that arrangement, hasn't been around very long, 10 years or so. And so, we are now confronting some very new phenomena and technological changes that are going to make our system better, but require us to make some improvements and essentially prepare the grid to handle those new innovations, like allowing you to have solar, granting you greater customer choice. Keep in mind, because the, and again, I'm probably boring you, and I apologize, but to me, it's fascinating. The, once, as I said, the power once was centralized, and as it becomes decentralized, it goes from a one-way flow of power, we now are looking at two-way power flows. The grid wasn't built for that. The grid was built for one-way power flows, and now with our customers sending power back, which is fantastic, it's great for customer choice, it's great for innovation, it's great for grid resiliency, and our move toward renewable energy and decarbonizing our grid. These are great innovations, but the grid wasn't built for that. It was built for one-way power flows, which means we need to beef up the grid and prepare for the increasing two-way power flows that we will all be experiencing. I might, I don't have solar yet. I might get solar down the road, because the prices come down quite a bit, and it makes sense today to do so. So, if I start sending power back to the grid, and all my neighbors do, we're now sending power back along the same circuits that we're sending, delivering power in the first place. That creates challenges. So, we are doing our best to bulk up the system, modernize it, and prepare it for that two-way power flow. So, that's one thing. That's another trend that's happening. The other trend that we're preparing for here in Southern California, particularly here in the inland empire, is population growth. And while there's this idea that a lot of people are flocking to state, and I have some friends who are going to Texas, and they are very happy about it, a lot of folks are still coming to California, because in my view, California is still a great place to live. And in particular, they're coming to the inland empire. Over the next few decades, we expect to see millions of people joining us as residents here in the inland empire. That's also going to, this also requires that we prepare for that population growth, to prepare for that increased demand. So, that's another trend that's happening. And finally, here in California, I'm sure you're all, you've all been seeing this in the news, people are becoming far more aware today of where their power comes from, they're getting far more interested in renewables and things. The state legislature is moving more and more toward a decarbonized grid. So, we, as a company, that puts an impetus on us to look for, not only look for new resources that are renewable, but also how do we bring customers and their systems into the fold and into the grid so that we can rely on them when, let's say, everyone's using their air conditioning system during the summer, and we need a little bit more power to get us through that peak demand during the summer? So, these are some of the trends that we're following very, very closely in the company, and these are some of the trends that are leading to what you're seeing here, this very important idea that we need to modernize the grid, get it ready for two-way power flows, electric vehicles, et cetera, and also prepare against cyber attacks and basically make the grid more secure. This is the other thing that that $13 billion is going to be paying for, is increased cybersecurity. Not to scare all of you, but we are at an age of heightened risk for cyber attacks, and no one wants to see the grid go down because of a cyber attack from who knows where. So, that's the other thing we've been pouring that money into. That was a much longer explanation of this slide, and I thank you for bearing with you as I went through that.
Is that what was on that slide?
Oh, and actually, your question brings up a good point. The City Clerk has this report, and so all of you on the dais, in fact, all of you in the room, if you'd like to see this report, the City Clerk has it, and you can go over it in more detail. You can kind of pour over it in your own time. I'm not going to go over everything, because I'll be here all night, but yes, that was what was on that slide. I'm very passionate about this topic. I hope you'll forgive me. Understanding your report, I mentioned the three metrics that we use for the, rather, the quantitative measures we use to determine how reliable we are in your community. These are numbers that we track very, very closely, and they are referred to in their acronym in our industry as SAFI, SADI, and then there's the MAFI number. And I'm not going to read this to you, but what I will say is, well, here's the definition. MAFI refers to, that M stands for momentary outages. We're tracking this number all the time. So, we're looking at momentary outages. These are outages that last longer than five, I'm sorry, or five minutes or less in duration. We also look at the SAFI number. The SAFI number refers to or looks at sustained outages each year. The number of sustained outages the average customer sees in their home or business every year. And then we also look at the SADI number, that D, I'm sorry, that S, rather, stands for sustained outages, and this is the cumulative number. So, these are the three metrics that our company and other companies that provide our service look at every year in every one of our cities to make sure that we are doing what we need to do to not only provide reliable power, but if we're not, let's look at the numbers and find out what's going on in that particular city, which is why we're here tonight. We're going to talk about what's going on here in Grand Terrace. So you know, the City of Grand Terrace, and that font is incredibly small, and I won't read all those cities, but Grand Terrace is part of the Redlands District. Again, that office is managed by Jim Harris. He and his team are very dedicated to this area and all the cities that you see here. It's all the cities that surround Grand Terrace, including some of the outlying cities of Banning and Beaumont, Calamasa. It's a relatively large territory with a lot of demand, but Jim and his team do a really good job managing it to the best of their ability so that power is as reliable as possible and customer service levels are as high as possible. So, that's the territory that Grand Terrace is in. I'm definitely not reading that slide, but that slide is in the report that you can get from your City Clerk. These are some of the numbers that we track, and this is how you compare year over year compared to other cities in the area in Southern California. And you can see, at the very top, it goes over, it goes by year, and right underneath that row, you see the SADI and SAFI numbers. And I'm sorry, they're so small, I can hardly see this, but basically, you can look at that chart, I'm going to let you do that on your own, to see where you stand as compared to some of these other cities, including, let's see, who's on there? Bishop Blythe?
Where's Grand Terrace on this? Oh, so it just says Redlands, and so it's Redland, it's for the whole district?
That's right. Thank you, Jim. This is by district. My apologies. This is how all the districts stack up against each other. I'll let you look at that on your own. I'm sure you're more interested in Grand Terrace.
Certainly, we're interested in Grand Terrace.
Let's move ahead, if we can, to the next slide. Is this, is there, can somebody help me advance this slide by chance? This doesn't seem to be moving ahead. Where should I point it? At this? Okay. Well, it appears that we have to stay stuck on this very, very boring slide. So, I'll let Jim take it away. No. While this is paused, I'd like to say, there are a couple of things, there are two main factors that have led to some of the outages you've seen here in Grand Terrace in 2017. One was an act of God. It was a lightning, there we go. Let's go back to this, actually. I'll get back to that act of God. It's very interesting. Overview of Grand Terrace. These are the circuits that feed Grand Terrace. There are five, and the largest one is what we call the Cooley Circuit, and that has 1,900 customers on it. They're all about the same size, over 1,000 customers, except for the Globe Mills Circuit. But this is essentially, again, not to bog you down with too much information, but this is the network of wires and poles that feeds Grand Terrace and provides you with power and connects to the local substations. So, you have five in this community. Before I get into that, though, and bring Jim up to go over some of these bars that you just saw, there are two things that, two trends that are happening in Grand Terrace. One was that act of God, a lightning-struck local substation in Colton, which a large portion of Grand Terrace is fed by. We prepare for outage, or, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We prepare for outage, or, I'm sorry, we prepare for lightning strikes through a number of measures. We have these fancy lightning arresters, but sometimes you just can't prevent all lightning strikes, and they're targets for lightning strikes, because they're big hunks of metal, usually in secluded areas. Sometimes they're around other facilities, but they're these magnets for electricity. So, they attract lightning, and we do our best to deal with it, but last summer, a lightning strike hit the Colton substation, knocked essentially the entire city of Grand Terrace out for several hours, I think it was at least 12 hours, and so, it was a very long time. That, and we worked really, really hard, really, as fast as we could to bring power up, we did so many different things to bring power up at the substation, and so, we were able to bring power up, I think it was the next day, or at least, it was at least 12 hours later, but we worked really, really hard. It was priority number one for us, this getting the Grand Terrace back up. So, we had the lightning strike. And then, the other thing that's happening is, in reference to, in part, some of the work that I mentioned earlier, this push for grid modernization, this idea that we need to enact a series of, and more than usual, pre-planned outages, maintenance outages, that we can prepare for and adequately prepare our customers for through outage notifications via email or by snail mail, giving them a heads-up, these outages are coming, and we're so sorry for the inconvenience that these are going to cause, and we truly are, but we're doing this because we don't want this equipment to fail when it really, really matters, and we don't want to be caught unawares, because that means the outages will be longer, it'll be harder to fix, more costly for us, and ultimately, more inconvenient for the customer. So, those are some of the anomalies in this particular year, skewing the numbers for reliability in Grand Terrace. Having said that, I will say, and Jim can expand on this, we're working really hard for the city of Grand Terrace to make sure that we limit the amount of outages that we have here, both pre-planned and unplanned emergency outages, and Jim will go over in more detail about some of the initiatives that he's got, some of the projects he's got planned, that are going to make things better here. Before I let Jim hear onto the mic, is there anything, can I answer any questions for you thus far?
All questions.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Cloud?
Yes.
You can't take questions from the audience?
My apologies, my apologies. We can address, I can speak with you after, if you'd like. There was a question about metering, and I'd be happy to answer that question.
Yeah, if you could get his card, maybe, and you could bring that question back with you after Mr. Harris speaks, that way, everybody has an opportunity.
Sure thing, I will do that, and I also wanted to add, too, you asked at a meeting recently for outage schools to come to Grand Terrace. We're happy to say that we're working with Mr. Duffy and his team to bring SCE outage schools to the city of Grand Terrace, to educate them on what happens during an outage, what they can do, what we're doing, when it seems like, you know, what is Edison doing to bring our power back? We're going to be scheduling those soon, and they're probably going to take place in the evening hours, I'll be there, our expert outage folks will be there, and they're going to, hopefully, we can get a good crowd there, and explain to folks what's happening during these outages. So, that outage school is coming, as I mentioned to you before, and if there are any other questions for me, I'll hand it off to Mr. Harris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Good afternoon, everybody, my name is Jim Harris, I am a district manager of the Redlands Office, not a mayor, esteemed members of the city council. We'll start here with, okay, your liability numbers, now, this report measures, it measures the outages that are emergent in nature, it doesn't measure the outages that were planned. So, these measures, the outages that are emergent in nature. This is, goes back to 2014, and it measures system average and the city of Grand Terrace. Again, the system average is the SCE, that would be in your red, so your system average for your SADI, system average for your SADI, again, 2014, was 174 minutes in Grand Terrace, where the Edison average was 112 minutes. Goes like that, and 2016, Grand Terrace was 133 minutes, that's per customer, and the system average was 134 minutes. And like Mark said, last year, we had that anomaly, where we had the lightning strike, and it took out four of the five circuits that feed the city of Grand Terrace. So, that took our average up to 437 minutes, which is about seven and a half hours for all the customers in the city of Grand Terrace, where our system average was 139.7 minutes. SAFI numbers, that is the amount of the average times that our breaker opens at the substation. So, in 2017, the average time our breaker, which would be the five circuits that feed Grand Terrace, opened, was two times, 2.1 was the average that the breaker opened. That does not mean that there wasn't an outage. Typically, you can have an outage if we have branch line fusing, or some other protection device, in front to protect the circuit. So, that's not indicative, that's just indicative of a health of our protection system, going back to our substations. The MAFI numbers, like Mark said, those are the momentary outages that we measure, anything less than five minutes, and that will be when your circuit, you see your lights dim, when we have a car hit pole, the wires get together, go out, and then they come right back on. That's R and R, where it's a relay and retest, typically that stays up, if it doesn't stay up, it goes into the SADI averages. Are there any questions on this slide right here?
Any questions? Mayor Protem.
I'm confused by the oral presentation, and then where the notes say that exclusions are the days where you have...
Yeah, exclusions are something, we don't use exclusions with Edison, exclusions are things like you could have weather, where you can, and any normal acts of God, nature, fires, wind, that type of thing, you can exclude those minutes of interruption from your numbers. We don't do that at Edison.
Okay, all right. So, you can, but you didn't, so that's...
We can, but we don't exclude those numbers.
Any other questions before he moves on? All right, thank you, Mr. Harris.
Okay, let me go. Again, what this slide indicates, this pie chart indicates, in the duration of outages that you had, 68% of the outages were due to weather, fire, or earthquake. 10% of the outages were due to equipment failure, that'd be on our side. 5% of the outages were due to third-party, that's a car hit pole, someone digging into our primary system, and 14% of the outages were by operation. An operation is when we have to open the, open the circuit breaker, open a switch to clear an area that needs to be repaired. So, that was for duration. Okay, now I'm stuck again. There it goes, okay. Again, this is frequency. Frequency, it will kind of go along the same lines as duration. Again, 36% of the frequency was due to weather, fire, earthquake, that type of thing. 17% was due to third-party, that's the blue slice of the pie. 18% was due to equipment failure, that's the light green, and in the pink section, 27% was due to operation, where we have to open the circuit breaker, open the line of equipment to clear trouble. What that indicates is just where the circuits are geographically located in the city of Grand Terrace, so I know, again, Mark says, you can go to the website to look at that in more detail, because I can't read that from here, and I can't read it from mine either, but that indicates where the five circuits that serve Grand Terrace are geographically. This slide indicates the work that we have going this year. Down in the bottom there, that cluster work is on the Preston Circuit, that is one of our worst-performing circuits, so we have a lot of work on the Preston Circuit. That work is scheduled to be completed by July 31st of this year, that is with our contractor, which is diversified, and they're doing that work there. That's a series of six work orders, that will include poles, probably branch line fusing, switches, and new conductor.
So, how much of Grand Terrace is affected by that particular?
It would be the Preston, and again, depending on the work type, some of that work you can do without an outage, some of it will require a maintenance outage. These are just the backup slides, you want to get into the backup slides? It's up to you guys.
Can you read that?
I can, but I have it right in front of me, though. What those backup slides indicate, it indicates, really, the average of the five circuits in Grand Terrace. Again, it goes from 2014 through 2017, where in 2017, we have first, second, third, and the fourth quarter, and if you, I wish I could make that bigger, but you could see that in the third quarter of last year is when we had the anomaly of a lightning strike. Every other quarter of the year, Grand Terrace is well below the system average of Edison, except for the third quarter, when we had 381 minutes across all the customers for outage minutes accrued. So, typically, the first quarter, you only had three minutes of interruption, second quarter, you had 35 minutes of interruption, again, third quarter, 381, and fourth quarter, 17. So, the grand total was 437 for the entire year, but that was because of the anomaly that we had in the third quarter. Any other questions?
You mentioned that 64% of our outages come from weather, fire, earthquake.
Right.
Will the upgrading of the grid do anything to help alleviate some of those issues? I understand a lightning strike on a transformer is going to take something down, but will the upgraded grid help to bounce back from any of that?
With the upgraded grid, we'll be building in more redundancies, so the more redundancies that you do have, the less customer minutes of interruption you'll see. You still probably will see some with fires, pole fires, you'll probably see some lightning strikes, but when you build redundancies in, you can kind of control the amount of customers that are affected by those types of things.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Wilson?
This may be a bit ethereal, but if I remember correctly, it was about 1978 when the city started to do its predominant undergrounding.
Yes.
And in that timeframe, you know, it's been, as your other fellow talked about, now, you're going to be faced with the challenge of feeding and back-feeding. So, in essence, you're going to go power onto the grid, power off the grid, and with that, just to understand the way the stuff works, is that it excites the electrons both ways, which technically wears out the wire.
Yes.
And I know you guys hate undergrounding, pretty much, which I understand why, because it's not air-cooled, it's not, it doesn't dissipate the heat quite as well. Is there any plan down the line to replace the wire itself? Because I heard switches, I heard other pieces, but I didn't hear anything about wire.
Yes, cable, we have an aggressive program where we go out there, and we do check the cable that we have installed in ground. What we do is we measure the consistency of the conductor, and if there's any pin holes that might go to ground, and then we identify those, and we get those replaced. What we do now, and this is done in every district, is we have grid, district grid teams, we used to have this regional grid team, where we identify at a regional level your priorities that needed to be completed and fixed in the field. We do that now at a district level. So, every month, we're sitting down, and we're looking at all the interruptions that we have, and what will cause those interruptions, and we sit with the field engineers, and we always, we get a plan of how we're going to attack certain things. If we have cable, that's one of our issues, that's something that we will upgrade.
And I guess this question then follows up on that. I know that a lot of stuff used to be what we called shake and bake. You would stick the stuff in the ground after you put a joint trench in there with sand underneath it, and then put the wire in, which was tied to other things, the services and so on, and then bury it, I mean, at least that's the way it was set up. And there wasn't so much conduit until we started to follow suit on the multifamily method of doing things. So, in those cases, how do you replace the wire?
Well, there's, we have some cable, it's called flat strap cable, which is a copper conductor, typically, we have aluminum conductor, we have a copper conductor that has more ampacity, that can fit in the existing duct, or we would go through and reduct the entire system to put in larger cable.
Thank you for your answers.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for your report, Mr. Harris.
You're more than welcome.
Mr. Cloud, I have another question for you. Did you have anything you wanted to say about meters?
Ah, meters, there was a question posed a little earlier about whether or not, or when Edison is going to move toward what's called time-of-use metering, or time-of-use rates. The answer is, we're currently, our push toward time-of-use rates is currently under regulatory review. We're going through, now, every three years, we go through a rate case with the California Public Utilities Commission. Sometimes the rates go up as a result, sometimes they go down, or remain flat. This rate case that we're hoping to get passed by the CPUC, will do a couple of things, will help fund that, these projects that I mentioned, this grid modernization effort here in Southern California, but also, what they'll do is change rates to account, or to go more toward this time-of-use rate structure, which basically charges different rates depending on the time of day that you're using power. So, if you, and this is, it incentivizes energy use during times where peak demand is low, and de-incentivizes power use when peak demand is high. And this is a mechanism that we can use as a demand-response mechanism. In other words, when demand goes really, really high, and everyone's using their HVAC systems to cool their houses and businesses down, because we're a summer-peaking utility, we can rely on time-of-use rates to incentivize folks to not use as much power during, let's say, the middle of the day when business is humming, and, you know, people are using their, typically, they're used to using like their home appliances, large washing machines, and things like that. So, that was the question, was in relation to time-of-use rates, and when they're coming, and they're coming relatively soon, they're currently under regulatory review, and if anyone wants to sound off on that topic, or ask, be accounted for in terms of having their voice heard at the CPUC level, they can go to the CPUC website, it's very easy to have your voice heard there, they let you call, or email, or write, and you can sound off on our rate case, but also, the, in particular, if you wanted to talk about the rate, the time-of-use rates, you could talk about that, too. So, that was the question that was asked earlier.
And I have one question about solar.
Yes.
And this relates to the CPUC.
Okay.
My understanding is, they only allow homeowners to sell back a certain percentage of the unused power generated from solar. Is that because of the grid's capacity?
I don't know exactly how to answer that question, because I don't know the details, but I can tell you that the management service called the California Independent System Operator, which we shortened to CAISO, it's basically a day-trading organization that trades energy in real time, kind of like the stock market, very fascinating, but very, very complex, and one of the things that they're seeing right now, because of all this solar that we have now in our system, is a changing, a changing demand curve. So, now, what we have, and I won't go into this in too much detail, but this is going all around all the industry, it's a buzzword now, you can Google it and see exactly, there's a visual representation of this, Google the duck curve, and the duck curve is the literal line graph that shows how power is now going, is peaking in the morning to a certain level, dipping down in the middle of the day where it used to peak higher, and now, it's ramping up in the evening hours beyond what it used to, and tapering off very, very quickly after everyone gets home, and basically, it's in response to solar. Solar only operates, or generates electricity during the evening hour, or during the day. So, when the evening hits, and before the evening hits, it, the peak goes way up, and then peaks, goes way down very, very quickly. In other words, it's a more volatile demand structure that the CAISO is looking at. That's impacting rates, it's impacting how we encourage people to use electricity, and it's impacting how we look at solar energy in general. So, I'm sure that that's a part of the CPUC's regulation around limiting solar incentives, because that duck curve is creating a real challenge for us, but in particular for CAISO. And you can learn, all of you can learn more about it by just Googling duck curve and watching videos, it's kind of fascinating if you're into that kind of stuff, but that's what's happening today because of all this solar that we have on our system now.
Thank you, Mr. Cloud. Any questions before we say our goodbyes? All right, thank you so much for being here tonight and your presentations.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is the consent calendar. Our consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request that an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests for removal of items at this time? All right, seeing no requests, I will entertain a motion for the consent calendar. I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Robles, second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with council members Henderson, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Robles voting yes, Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll open public comment, and this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. I may also ask for a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment, or may request a matter be agendized for a future meeting. Is there anyone who'd like to speak during this time? Oh, all right. So we have a city consultant, and Mr. Duffy, you are going to introduce our speaker?
Yes, Mayor, we have Terry Jones. And she is our code enforcement officer. And she was, I wanted to introduce her and give her an opportunity to say a few words to the city council.
My name is Teresa Jones, recently retired, 2010. I work as a contract inspector, and my new contract is with Grand Terrace here. I'm here to fill some pretty big shoes following Barry Owens, and I'll be here in the interim until recruitment of the new inspector.
All right, well, welcome, Ms. Jones.
Thank you very much.
Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak during this time?
I'd like to know what other new staff we have.
So we don't, I don't believe that we have, Louise was the last staff person that we hired.
Well, the young man here I've never been introduced to. Is this part of our staff here?
Young man.
In the first row here, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Todd, why don't you come forward? I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem. Todd has been with us actually for a, how long? Introduce yourself, Todd.
Oh, hi. Madam Mayor, esteemed members of the council. My name is Todd Noxaki. I was hired in September as a management analyst for the finance department. I was not interested in the council, but it is a pleasure to be here and introduce myself formally in front of all of you.
Yeah, because I see you when I go up there, but I don't know who you are.
Well, thank you for being here tonight.
Okay.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak during this time? All right, seeing no takers, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for the communications. We'll begin with council member Ken Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I only have one brief comment tonight. I'd like to echo my colleague, Councilmember Bill Hussey's comments from two weeks ago, thanking Bobby Forbes, longtime local citizen, in her effort to collect signatures to enhance our public safety efforts. As Ms. Forbes reported, she did not get the number of registered signatures, but the effort, in my view, will not die down. And hopefully, the council and community will work together to effectuate an enhanced public safety program. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Councilmember Bill Hussey.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. One, I'd like to thank a couple of the residents here. They're doing Back to Blue at the ramen noodle place, so they want to pay for first responders' dinner. So if you guys go over there and just say, hey, we're here for Back to Blue, dinner, it's on residents. And also, the community cleanup, April 21st at CVS parking lot, I'll be there from 8:00 to 12:00. So I'm requesting that other residents come out and help, you know, clean up Grand Terrace. We trash and everything, I know. There's a lot of trash out there that people just throw out. And I know our city's pretty clean, but when you go down the side of the hills and everything, there's quite a bit of trash. And also, on Grand Terrace High School, they're having a, the band is having a pancake breakfast at Applebee's on Mulberry Street in Riverside, and that's not till April 22nd, it's from 8:00 to 10:00, and that's $10. And what Mr. Henderson said, I don't know about what, how many signatures were got, brought up or anything, but I'd like to do a follow-up. I'd like to make an agenda item to follow up on that, if, on signatures. I don't know if we could, give a second, or the staff could look into that for the shares and see what was presented, how many signatures were made and how many were short. But me personally, you know, being in law enforcement and seeing what's happening to our state and being out there in the league of cities and seeing what's going on, I know our officers have a lot of work to do. And I don't want to see one of our officers not without a partner at night. You know, Grand Terrace is still safe, but the state has changed. The city has changed, you read about it, they just caught five other people breaking into the house. Lord help us if you've got to go in there by yourself. You know, I know, quick response and we have the helicopters over us, but, you know, as a resident, as a council member, I want our city to be safer like it was back in the old days, and I want our first responders to be safe. You guys put your life on the line every day. Me, as a resident, I don't mind opening up my wallet to make that happen. It's very little what they have brought out for the petition, it's pretty much self-explanatory. It's a step before the city to, you know, be solvent, well, we can actually pay for the two officers, you know, with all the development. But I believe in proactive instead of reactive, and we've got to take care of each other. So I don't know, like I said, what, how many signatures they missed by, or, you know, what's going on, but I would like to bring an agenda item to bring it to the voters, where possible. Vote on the initiative for law enforcement. And I'm hoping some of my councilmembers will back me up on that. And I know we all, you know, fond of you, and we appreciate all the work that you guys are doing. But I know some of the residents are worried, and times have changed. And it's time to be proactive instead of reactive. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Doug Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed that here, well, I shouldn't say I noticed. There must be something, but my wife has a different kind of earthquake sniffer than I do. But she picked up that 3.4 that happened the other day. And it just goes to show you, it was right at the confluence of the San Jacinto and the San Andreas. So that's where it took place. Tells us that the earth is moving. And we know, because we have the studies, that it says that our primary concern is, for any kind of emergency considerations, are earthquakes. A little bit for fire, but mainly earthquake stuff. So I would encourage all who are within this mic to get yourself a packet, or make up a package that you can depend on, that will help you in emergency management situations, because there's no reliable way to determine when something's going to happen other than about 10 seconds worth of lead. So it would be important for you to prepare yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Mayor Pro Tem Sylvia Robles?
Yes, I attended the monthly board of directors meeting on Wednesday, April 4th of Omnitrans. We authorized the CEO, general manager, proceed with the purchase of two parcels of vacant land adjacent to South East Street facility. We authorized bench contracts for automatic transmission fluids. We authorized a ward for solar lighting for bus stops. And in discussions of items, we authorized the new CEO contract. He was given a 4% raise, and it was in line. He received less money than the general employees this year, so this was kind of more of an equity issue. I want to suggest that we get an ad hoc committee to kind of determine how we operate our agenda items. My thinking is, it was until 6:50 before we can get to city council communications. And a lot of cities are putting those at the end of the agenda because, to allow for the public that comes on the public hearing items to move more quickly on it. I also would like to, you know, because of the ad hoc I'm airing, what I'm interested in is, I understand other cities, they have city council communications just for general items, and then they have a section for people to report out of committees. And I just think that perhaps we should report out of committees just substantial items and try to limit it to three minutes. Also, we've been discussing, at different times, one of us will say, or we've been bringing up in a workshop, a process on how to place items on the agenda item, and it never gets solidified. So I'd like to see us do an ad hoc committee on some of our internal processes. Also, I'm just wondering, on the sheriff's signatures, because I haven't really been in, it was supposed to be a citizen-driven item, so I haven't been involved in it. So, but understanding election law, they pretty much just missed the June ballot. So they can continue to get signatures and try to make the November ballot. But I think what you're asking for is for the council itself to take on the issue and putting it on the agenda. Well, okay, now I'm done.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. April 4th, I attended the SBCTA board meeting. Items that were not reported as part of the Metro Valley Study Session and General Policy Committee meetings I'll report on today. We approved an exception to the rail property policy to waive use fees associated with the university station parking area lease to be constructed in the city of Redlands, and this is part of the Redlands Passenger Rail Project. We received an update on the West Valley Connector project to approve amendment to service agreement with Parsons Transportation Group for architectural engineering and final design services for the West Valley Connector project. West Valley Connector project is a two-phase, 35-mile-long rapid bus project. And this will create a bus route that has limited stops, and it's supposed to provide speedy and rapid transit through the corridor. This is actually supposed to link up in San Bernardino with the SBX route. We authorized an amendment to contracts with Mott-McDonald Group, formerly Hatch-Mott-McDonald, and WSP, formerly Parsons Brinckerhoff, for on-call transit and rail services. We allocated available Mobile Source Air Pollution Reduction Committee Clean Transportation Partnership Program grant funds and MetroLink-generated State Transit Assistant Operator Share Funds to a MetroLink-San Bernardino Line fare discount program. In other words, we're taking the available grants that are out there and we're applying them to the MetroLink in this area to allow for passenger fare to be decreased by 25%. This is supposed to help them improve ridership. We approved cooperative agreement with the Mountain Area Regional Transit Authority to provide project development services for delivery of mountain transit facility upgrade study. And we approved the appointment of Councilmember Ray Marquez from the City of Chino Hills to the Southern California Regional Rail Authority Board of Directors as an alternate member. And because of that, generally, the members that are assigned to that are part of our transit committee. And so we have nine members on the transit committee. We've approved a 10th seat on that committee through the end of December, so that he may also participate on that committee. We had hearings to consider adoption of resolution for necessity for parcels that are being purchased by the Redlands Passenger Rail Project in the cities of San Bernardino and Redlands. And we authorized the general counsel to prepare, commence, and prosecute proceedings in eminent domain for the purpose of acquiring this right of way and real property interest. All the parcels listed in the agenda, with the exception of three, two were settled in negotiation and one was asked to be removed by the board at this time based on testimony by property owners. And that was my meeting for that time, and that's all I have to report on. We will move to item nine, which is a public hearing. To speak on public hearing items, please fill out a request to speak form and give it to the city clerk. Each person will be allowed three minutes to address the city council. If you challenge in court any action taken concerning public hearing item, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, described in this notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. All public hearings will be conducted in the following format. We will open the public hearing, we will hear any written communication. The city council has an opportunity to ask questions of staff. We have applicants' comments. At this time, the applicant will be the city, is that correct? We have oral arguments in favor and opposition. Those speakers will be limited to three minutes. The applicant can make a rebuttal to any arguments heard. Public hearing will be closed, and city council will have deliberation. So we'll open the public hearing. This is a zoning code amendment 17-04. And we will ask for the applicant to speak to us. We have Director Sandra Molina.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Sandra Molina, and I'm the Planning and Development Services Director. As indicated by the mayor, this is a public hearing to consider a zoning code amendment to the city's municipal code. This item does promote our 2030 vision with regard to promoting economic development. So the zoning code amendment proposes to amend the Definitions Chapter of our zoning code and the Commercial Manufacturing, Restrictive Manufacturing, and the M2 Industrial Zone Districts. It also proposes to establish a performance, a new chapter for establishing performance standards. The proposal, in a broad sense, is intended to allow the placement of reasonable conditions on outdoor activities through the conditional use permit process to mitigate impacts from those uses. The Planning Commission would have the review authority of the conditional use permit. And the conditional use permit is subject to periodic review. If determined to be operating outside compliance of those conditions, the commission and the council have the ability to modify conditions or revoke CUPs, if necessary. So this item really stems from a moratorium that was adopted by the city council on May 23rd, 2017. Excuse me, May 23rd, 2017. And the moratorium was established because at the time, city staff was receiving many inquiries with regard to outdoor uses, such as contractor's storage yards, storage of organic shipped material, heavy equipment, or heavy truck storage. And so because our zoning code did not have, or does not have, regulations that would adequately regulate those type of uses, staff proposed to the council, and the council adopted the moratorium. The code amendment today addresses the issues that predicated the moratorium. The Planning Commission did conduct public hearings on the 20, excuse me, on March 1st and March 22nd of this year, and recommended that city council adopt the ordinance, which is attached to the council's agenda report. So as indicated in the staff report, the city adopted a general plan in 2010, and the general plan serves as a build-out for the city. Our zoning code needs to align with the general plan. Our general plan has designations of light industrial and floodplain industrial, which are the land-use designations that cover these zone districts that we're talking about. And the general plan indicates that the industrial uses are those that can be made compatible with surrounding uses regarding noise, dust, traffic, air quality. And so in looking at the zoning code and proposing the revisions to the code, that was done in keeping with the was done in keeping with the vision and intent of our general plan. And this is just a map of the general plan. This is a Mount Vernon, and so, really, our industrial uses are located on the west portion of the city. This purple area here are industrial zone uses under our general plan. Our zoning code, our zoning map identifies, and it's a little hard to see, but the green bounded areas are the areas that would be subject to the code amendment we're talking about. So, up here north of Vivienda, off of Walnut, both sides of Barton Road. We have this small sliver here that has commercial manufacturing, a small area here. Here's a Michigan Street, and here's, here's Van Buren. Then we have here where Wildon Pump is at and a storage area. And then here on the west end, this area here would also be subject to the code revisions. The portions in the middle here are areas that will be rezoned based upon the zoning code amendment that is being processed with the gateway specific plan. And so, when we look at the locations of the city that would be, be subject to these regulations, it's really just those areas that I pointed out. It's also important to note that these changes are not intended to zone out existing uses, and that was one of the concerns that came up during the public hearing for the Planning Commission. We are making these changes to be consistent with our zoning, excuse me, with our general plan, and really, these regulations would only affect existing uses if they were to expand or modify their existing outdoor activities. If uses that are, have outdoor activities, outdoor storage that exist today, continue to operate in the same manner, then these regulations won't, won't apply until such time as there's a modification. And of course, if a new use was proposed with outdoor storage or activities, then it would be subject to a conditional use permit. And when, when looking at the proposed revisions to the three zone districts under permitted uses, and to help the council with that, let me direct to a stamped page. So, for instance, on stamp page, on stamp page 199. Actually, I think it'd be a better representation, on stamp page 204. So, under conditionally permitted uses, what we've done is indicated if these uses have an outdoor component such as building supplies and sales, contractor's office and storage yards, and we're adding outdoors. So, when you have those outdoor activities, that's going to trigger the conditional use permit. However, you have a use that can operate completely indoors, then there would be no CUP requirement. And so, that's really the premise of this code amendment, is to require the conditional use permit and establishment of reasonable conditions when there are outdoor activities. The, the code amendment proposes to modify the chapter of definitions. In particular, the manufacturing definitions were revised to provide greater distinction and clarity between the different levels of industry, and we did add some new definitions. For instance, contractor's storage yard, warehousing, manufacturing are just a couple of them that weren't defined, and now we're proposing to define them in our code. Part of the changes or the language that we're adding to those, the commercial manufacturing, restricted manufacturing, and industrial zone district is to identify prohibited uses, which are those which would be hazardous or flammable. Examples would be pallet or wood product storage yards, or tire storage. And as the council will recall, we had CB tires, which the council did end up revoking that CUP. They had exceeded their conditional use permit conditions, and they had substantial tire storage. We are also proposing to, in those three districts, to revise the storage and trash facility section so that if outdoor storage uses are proposed, then there are screening requirements such as a block wall and setback requirements. With regard to screening through a block wall, the, the proposed language also would allow the Planning Commission to waive all or part of the screening requirements where there's topographical conditions, maybe above grade and it's not visible, or if existing buildings block that area that's going to have outdoor storage, then, then the commission could say that a block wall would not be required. It also establishes standards for trash enclosures, which really don't exist right now. This discussion on screening of outdoor storage also calls attention to the correspondence that was received from the legal counsel of the Kevin Davis Family Trust, and that was provided to the council on the dais. And this communication indicates that Mr. Davis is not necessarily, he does not oppose the code amendments, only one provision, and that provision has to do with the M2 Zone District. Mr. Davis owns property within the M2 Zone District. And he does oppose the adoption requiring the construction of a solid decorative masonry wall for outdoor storage, and that there should be the opportunity to have alternative screening. And he indicates, for instance, where Mr. Davis has his landscape company, there's fencing and landscape material that forms screen wall. And so, I, I would want to note that what is being suggested by Mr. Davis's attorney is actually what is written in our code right now. So, if you were to look at, for instance, stamp page 205. Paragraph B on the bottom, which requires storage to be visibly screened, or visually screened from public view, and you go to the next page, on paragraph C, it says, "Where topographical conditions or existing structures are such that the strict compliance of the requirements of the section would not be necessary to accomplish the screening, the Planning Commission may waive compliance with all or part of such requirements." So, the commission could take into consideration that this particular property is at a higher elevation, already has a screening in place. And so, I, I believe that what is being asked for by Mr. Davis with regard to his existing use is what is permissible or being proposed in our code amendment. There's also a proposed section in the M2 District for interim uses. And what, what is being proposed here is that within a certain area of the city, which is the floodplain overlay on the northerly end of the city, because there are existing conditions which are challenging such as the floodplain, which would require raising of the grade elevation in order to construct structures, has Edison easements, wells on site, those type of, those type of challenges, which would be very costly and would take some time to address, we propose a section that would allow the Planning Commission to determine interim uses for an interim period of time. And what that would allow, would allow the commission to consider reduction in setback standards, landscape and screening materials, and allow alternate paving materials such as gravel for parking and storage areas on an interim basis. What we left, didn't specify in the proposed language was what, what, who determines or what defines the term of the interim period, and that would be left on a case-by-case basis as proposed in our ordinance. Again, we are proposing performance standards that would apply to all properties, which would establish property maintenance, noise, odor, illumination, to name a few. This type of chapter is very common in most jurisdictions, and so, we're adding it to our, our code as well. This is just a list of the different attachments that are in the agenda packet. We did provide the Planning Commission minutes, the adopted ones from March 1st, and the draft ones from March 22nd. The reason for attaching that was so that the council could see the comments that were received during the public hearing. And with that, I, I do thank the council for listening to the, the staff report. We feel that the recommended changes do address the issues that were raised at the time the moratorium was put in place. It addresses them through aesthetics, addresses the aesthetic issues through screening and setbacks, requires the conditional use permit for the outdoor storage and activities, and we would recommend approval of the code amendment. With that, I'll close my presentation, and I'll be happy to respond to any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Director Molina. Before I get to questions, I have one written correspondence, or is there any other written correspondence? And would my colleagues like this read into the record? Okay. Then I will, this is in the record, and I know that Director Molina did address it, and I might have some questions actually with regard to that. But we will start back with our council questions to, to the staff comments. We'll go with Councilmember Henderson, then Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have just one question and possibly one comment. With respect to the outdoor screening requirements and the term topographical conditions and existing structures, which would allow the Planning Commission to waive those outdoor storage requirements, are those the only two criteria? Is there anything else other than topographical conditions and, and existing structures?
No, the way the ordinance is written, it's, it's those two items.
Okay. Okay, thank you. With respect to interim use, I would ask my colleagues to consider placing a time limitation on the interim use as part of our consideration of this, of this matter. As to what would be appropriate, I, I'm not sure. I can tell you that from experience that if the, if the timeframe is too long, the interim use becomes in effect a permanent use. And then you have concerns from property owners who comply with other provisions of our code in a permanent use, and feeling like they're not receiving equal protection from the, from the city with respect to the interim uses. It appears to me that, well, what I would ask our, my colleagues to consider is to establish a, an interim use, maximum use limitation of three years. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson, and Councilmember Wilson.
I understand the concern about the interim use circumstance, although I do have great confidence in our Planning Commission and their recommendations in relation to the case-by-case basis that Director Molina talked about. I'd first like to congratulate the, the members of the Planning Commission and you and your staff, Ms. Molina, for all the hard work that you guys put into this, this zoning code amendment. It is, it was a monster, and you conquered it. So, I'd like to say thank you. I did have one question, and I guess it's just kind of a technical one, and that is, on packet page 169. Has to do with, oops, I missed it, there it is. It has to do with section 18.36.030. I just had a question. Under A, it says, "Business and office facilities require a conditional use permit process." I am thinking that this runs with the use. So, if we have a business and office facility that runs with the use and it is permitted, then do we really need to require a, a CUP? It seems to me that this works under the permitted uses. So, I think it could be moved up into the permitted uses rather than it being a, a CUP required, a requirement unless it's a multi-story circumstance.
Councilmember Wilson, I, you're correct. If a construction storage yard came and had outdoor and did a CUP, it's, they're going to have an office. And so, this paragraph A, if a use came that was a standalone office use, insurance office, so to speak, the way it's written, it would require a conditional use permit. So, so, Commissioner, Councilmember Wilson is saying that type of circumstance should just be permitted.
Yeah, we want to encourage office use and things, especially if we actually can get them, you know, get more of them. And I'm thinking that should be a permitted use, if anything.
Yes.
I'd like to hear from my colleagues if they've got any.
I agree with Councilmember Wilson. I think that's an excellent suggestion.
I don't, I don't see a reason why a conditional use permit would be needed for that either.
And may I also add that on paragraph D, general assembly facilities, the way this was originally written in the code, it had to do with assemblies such as an auditorium or something that would bring people in as assembly, and it used to say, "Accept church facilities or church uses," which you can't do. So, and I spoke to our city attorney this afternoon, and I, we would actually recommend that we delete this particular paragraph D.
Would, would you want to make sure that there was ample parking for a facility like that? Would that be part of just the site and architectural?
Right, but what we would recommend is just completely eliminating general assembly facilities, which is bringing, you know, large people in from the zone district altogether.
Okay, so not, making it not permitted in that area?
Correct.
I see. Are there any other questions for staff at this time?
I get.
Mayor Protem?
When is the, the next general plan update?
We haven't scheduled the next general plan update, Mayor Protem. That, that's something that staff can look at and, and provide back to the city manager.
Well, if it needs to be done every 10 years, where are we at from when we did our last one to deciding when to do the next one?
It was adopted in 2010, and so, we're about eight years out.
Because, you know, because I agree with my colleague, Councilman Henderson, you know, I'd want to put a time limit on this because I want to make sure that we're not amending and gutting things as we go along, that we really ought to have a plan. So, I'd like to put a, a timeline with this, you know, but it's hard to do it when you don't have a general plan, so I would say two years would be a good time.
I'm sorry, you're referring to the interim use provisions?
Yeah, mhm.
I, I appreciate what Councilmember Wilson indicated in terms of, and I agree, the Planning Commission's done excellent work in this regard, and can, and has the ability to provide on a case-by-case basis. My concern, though, about equal protection goes to that case-by-case issue as well. And, and, and I think when you adopt rules and regulations, if you, if you take a step back and, and consider how they might be enforced, it might inform your, your decision about the adoption process. In this particular instance, I think each applicant should know that there's a maximum timeframe for the interim use, so there's no misunderstandings, no mistakes that, that the council, the commission or the council would have to, would have to attempt to resolve in the future. So, I, I thought in, in discussing the matter with Director Molina prior to the meeting starting, my limitation on interim use was actually in months and not years, but.
My interim use would be in months as well, because I can't imagine interim being three years. That doesn't sound interim to me.
Those are all issues that I struggle with as well, Mayor, and I, one way of doing that is, is to, is to develop a definition for interim, and then if someone conforms to that definition, then it's a matter of how much time they have on that particular site with that particular use.
I'm, I'm thinking it would depend on the, the plan that was presented to go along with the interim, and why a, a certain amount of time would be needed.
Like if it was interim in nature?
Yeah, say 10 to 12 years interim, absolutely. I, I think that that presents a problem. When, when you do leave it open-ended, but then it also presents a problem when somebody has a real valid reason, although not having a, a project in mind with the request for the interim, it's hard to, it's hard to really put a, an assessed value on that interim time.
If, if the council were to consider adoption of the three-year time limitation, it could, in, in taking that action, it could, it could authorize the Planning Commission to, to consider an interim use greater than three years and make that. use greater than three years and make that specific recommendation to the council for consideration.
Mr. City Attorney?
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'd recommend that possibly this type of discussion be held after the public hearing.
Thank you. So are there any questions at this time? All right. We have heard our applicant's comments, so we will move on to oral in favor or opposed. Are there any requests to speak during this time? No? All right. So I'm just about to close this public hearing, Mr. McConnell.
You normally ask.
Did you turn in a request to speak as asked? No.
You ask at every meeting and also ask every meeting if there's anyone in the audience at every meeting.
Please state your name for the record.
Is that going to change in the future?
It may.
For the record, Jeffrey McConnell, 21758 Walnut Avenue. I've attended both of these meetings and the Planning Commission had concerns. I'll bring some of them here. First of all was, I understand about the moratorium for outdoor storage, but where did the interim use come from and why? The other reason was, as was brought up and negated at the Planning Commission, was why was the city manager attempting to get power to determine interim using and grant it? That would be the job of the Planning Commission. So that gave me concern as to what was really going on specifically down in our 40 acres in the floodplain, because the property owner, the ranchers down there and myself are very concerned about what goes on within the floodplain, of course. The light industrial that was allocated to that area is now medium manufacturing, which includes large trucks. And we all know that the road down there is extremely substandard. Some of the reflectors have been lost from cars going over the edge of the terrace down there and never replaced more than a decade ago. The three years, the interim use is, one is, requires a CUP. So if they're there three years and they want to extend the CUP, does that give them, do they have the power just to walk into the counter and just renew it without anybody getting notice? Does it also give them the possible opening the door for them to become vested in the property, the vacant land, I mean? Or was this interim use basically for existing businesses to just temporarily, like Georgia Pacific rented out their land to the freeway people down at the end of Debury along the freeway? That would be an interim use because it's when they're done building the freeway or whatever, then they'll be gone. So the fact that you require screenings of the block wall for interim use doesn't sound right to me as a builder for many years. Why would you want to invest that much money? Block walls, especially split-faced block walls, are not cheap. You're not going to make a significant investment unless you have a long-term plan. Mr. Kevin Davis has already had more than a decade ago a plan to do RV storage on the five-acre parcel to the west of my farm down there. So I'm not sure what he's up to. So that's primarily my concerns. Where did this interim use come from? From outdoor storage to interim use? Why was the power given to the city manager attempted to? Why we now have heavy trucks possibly going down into the floodplain? And is the CUP easily renewable at the counter? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during this time? All right, seeing no takers, I will close public hearing and bring it back to the council for their deliberations. And I will ask Director Molina on packet page 179, where we do talk about interim use 18.04.110 says where topographical or other conditions exist. So this is a little bit different than the, than the conditions for screening.
Yes.
In other sections. So other sections of this ordinance are saying block walls unless topographical reasons exist. But this is actually saying other conditions exist. And so if it is specifically for an interim use, that might be a reason why concrete block walls are not asked to be used for screening. Is that correct?
Yes. In this section, the zoning code, when there's very specific language addressing a particular issue, for instance, this interim use standard, because it's specific to interim uses, would supersede the general broader requirement for block walls. That's typically the way the zoning code would work. And it does say other conditions, because the area we're looking at does have, again, floodplain easements, wells on the site.
All right. And so this is also saying as approved by the Planning Commission. So I was understanding from our speaker during public hearing that it was a city manager that was approving this, but it says to me here that it's the Planning Commission.
Sure, I can address that. So when researching other cities and looking at the different type of uses that they allow in these industrial, excuse me, the zone districts we're looking at, I came across a city, and I tried to go back and find that city that had a provision for interim uses. And the way it's written, you know, with regard to the topography issues and allowing lesser development standards was from that particular city. The reason why it initially said city manager was because if you recall, if you recall the moratorium, the moratorium allowed for a hardship waiver, and that hardship waiver process was heard by the city manager. So I had it initially for that reason. But during the public hearing process, members of the public did express concern with that. The commission also felt that it was more appropriate to have a body of people look at the, look at the proposed use. And so based upon that input and the direction from Planning Commission, it was changed to Planning Commission. I also want to clarify and correct an issue is that this area down here is designated on our general plan as light industry. And the zoning code calls it M2 industrial. But there wasn't a change, as was indicated by Mr. McConnell, to now call it medium manufacturing. That hasn't changed. I just wanted to be clear on that particular comment.
And so it is medium manufacturing or is not?
It is zoned.
M2.
M2. And the M2 call, in our zoning code, it says M2 industrial district.
So does this ordinance, in how we're changing it, have anything to do with infrastructure improvements that would need to be made by any business that wanted to have trucks come to deliver or distribute product?
So if a new use was coming into town or business, that we would look at the infrastructure requirements that would need to occur for use. If the roadway improvements are in and they're adequate to address, and simple delivery it most likely is, but in areas where there's not infrastructure or street improvements in place or substandard, we would look at that for a permanent use. With regard to this particular section on interim uses, we would look at a lesser standard.
Okay. And so if we did not approve this, would that stop trucks from getting lost and going into areas of the city where they're not allowed?
No. If that's occurring, this zoning code amendment, it's going to, what's occurring would not impact that.
Okay. Councilmember Wilson, you had a question on packet page 178?
Yes, packet page 178, front yard. I think you may have a typo there. It's standard is, it says 1525. That's a big front yard. For the 10-foot landscape setback? Okay.
It is a typo, and the front yard setback is 25. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mayor Protem.
Oh, Ken.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, back to the interim use issue, we heard during the public comments that, about a question or a comment made about extending the initial CUP of an interim use. And I think that demonstrates to me at least, some of the concerns I have from experience, where the interim use is extended and extended and extended, and it becomes in effect a permanent use. So that was the, part of the reasoning for my, my thinking on setting a time limit and having the Planning Commission include that as part of its approval process. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, I guess I'm troubled by having a general plan that needed to be amended. And I know there's amendments that need to be done, but it seems like that section of our community seems to always be in some kind of zoning hubbub. And then now, I'm not sure we're curing having many issues of conflicts of zoning and what people think are the most appropriate uses by doing an interim use. I do see, though, the letter from, on the Davis trust can be addressed by our Planning Commission and by this process. I do trust them to be aware of the adjoining uses and to be cognizant of what their needs are. So I think the only issue for me is what's the time limit on interim? And I'm open to suggestions on that.
Councilmember Henderson, I still think it is case-by-case, because if we do look at the example of using outdoor storage for the construction of the Freeway Interchange project, what would be the interim need for that? I think what it comes down to, though, is how many, how many opportunities to extend the CUP. There should be a way to amend that as well, to say, yes, you might get three years on the CUP, but you don't get any extensions, depending on what the project is. Then again, you could say it's an interim use for a year and you have to come back and request an extension. And you get a certain number of extensions, again, depending on the project. And really, I understand your issue with that and yours, Mayor Protem, but I really think it comes down to project by project, and I would really hope that our Planning Commission is up to that task.
Mayor, I'm persuaded by your comments. I think that's the appropriate approach to take. The Planning Commission's done an excellent job in this respect, and I believe it will continue to do a good job. And it's hard to set a hard and fast deadline for each interim use without knowing what the use is. And some are very short and some may require some time. So I think the good folks that have the expertise on our commission can make that decision and.
I would say I don't want any automatic extensions.
I would agree with that, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, you had a comment?
Yes, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. Just one point, that on Barton Road, when you're going to go into that 40-acre area, you're actually crossing into the city of Colton going down that one, that one street. I did speak with the city manager today, and they are going to make that a non-truck route. And so that should help, so trucks get, you know, they make that turn, they go on, and they get stuck down there. So making that a non-truck route is going to be helpful. In addition to that, too, you know, one of the things that the council should consider when we talk about interim uses is that, it has been my experience that the facilities that we're talking about locate and then come in after they've located. And as one of the resolutions, we try to do interim uses. So one of the things that the council should ponder is whether they would grant interim use to people who've already established, illegally established a process on those sites. So, because I think it's a difficulty, it's, you know, we try to get them to come into compliance, but a lot of these businesses locate there without any proper permits, and then we're dealing with an enforcement issue. And one of the things that you end up doing is you try to get them to comply, and now you grant them this interim use while they, while they try to comply. And we have those situations currently. So I don't know that you want to reward bad behavior, because if they locate there without going through the proper process, then it's out of the Planning Commission's hands. The Planning Commission is now trying to bring them into compliance versus setting the standards on the interim, on the interim uses.
So you're saying no interim use?
I think that no interim uses for someone who's already, you know, established, who's already legally established a, I don't want to say established a business, because they don't have a business license, they don't have permission to be on the site, and it usually starts out with a code enforcement issue. And then we, then they, then they want to say, well, we've already established our business, so let us stay here and work through the process. Then we grant them interim use. And that's sort of the way that I've seen two, three, or more businesses that locate in the city in those outdoor storage uses. A really good example would be that pallet company.
Would this ordinance address that issue?
This ordinance would address the issue for future ones. We're currently working with that pallet business through the CUP process.
Okay.
I did want to add, Madam Mayor, if the council desires for staff to take a closer look at this particular section, we can do that.
Of the interim use?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Is that something that you'd like staff to come back with?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Do you believe you have enough to come back with something alternate?
The council can do a couple of things. The council can move forward the ordinance without this section and have staff come back when we've looked at it more closely to address some of the concerns that are being raised. We can, we can go that route, so we move the, we move the entirety forward, because that would address the moratorium which is set to expire in April.
Councilmember Henderson.
I think that's a good approach, Madam Mayor. I would, I want to go back to Mr. Duffy's comments. I believe that we should not reward bad behavior, and I should, I believe that interim uses should not be granted to someone who's established a non-conforming use. It is, that, in thinking about it, that is also part of my concern about the interim use, just having wrestled with those issues in the past.
I agree with that. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, what I'm concerned about is that something interim with some permanency, and then we do a general plan, and they're in conflict.
Director Molina, you want to address that?
Part of what we look at with uses is consistency with the general plan. So the, and the uses that are listed in the zone district are uses that are consistent with the general plan land use designation. And as we look through the CUP process, we would look at the use and through conditions and through the way the business operates, seek, or make sure that it's consistent with the general plan. And so even with an interim use, we're talking about maybe a lessening of the development standards, so they're not permanent significant cost investment to the, to the user, to the developer, but the use itself would still have to comply with the zoning code list of uses, which promotes the general plan.
Okay, but, excuse me, but, so we say, okay, so say the Planning Commission says, okay, well, you're not going to be here very long, so we're going to put chain link with slats, as opposed to if there were coming other, another purer process, they would say, no, you know, you're going to be here a long time, you really need to do the masonry wall. Those are the kinds of things I'm thinking about.
And Mayor Protem, you're right, that's what this particular section would, would allow, to look at the, you know, a chain link with slats or chain link with landscaping as opposed to a more permanent improvement. So, I mean, the council has, has a few, few options to go. I would suggest that, or recommend that, we move forward with introduction of the ordinance, but either direct staff that you want us to look at this particular section or just you don't want this section at all.
And this is with the suggestion that on page 169, under conditional, conditionally permitted uses, you would be removing items A and items D?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
How would you like to move forward?
Madam Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please do.
It's what she said.
Okay. So we're moving forward with, with reading the, the public, or reading the title, introducing the ordinance with the change of the items 18.36.030, removing business and office facilities and general assembly facilities from the conditionally permitted uses. And then, and then pulling out the interim use section.
Yes, ma'am.
And have that come back.
Staff, right, to bring that back, yes.
All right, so that's.
Madam Mayor, I think on, on page 169, there was also the removal of item D, general assembly facilities, that you wanted, that part of it?
I thought I read that.
Yeah, I thought you did too.
And, and when you said moving item A, you meant moving it up to the permitted uses under O2O?
Yes.
Okay. There was also a typographical error that Councilmember Wilson pointed out on page 178?
In the, in the table, yes. So the, the change, the, the motion will reflect that it's a 25 foot?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so is that your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Henderson, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Wilson, second to that, please vote.
Madam Mayor, maybe we have the ordinance.
Oh, yes, after the, after the city clerk reads the ordinance. Thank you.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, finding that this ordinance is exempt from review pursuant to California and by a merit of quality at guidelines, section 15061B3, and amending Title 18 zoning of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code by amending chapter 18.06 definitions, repealing and replacing chapters 18.36, CM Commercial Manufacturing District, 18.39, MR Restricted Manufacturing District, 18.40, M2 Industrial District, and amending Title 18 with the addition of chapter 18.74 Performance Standards.
Thank you. Now, did you record our votes or do we need to vote?
No, you're good. Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hesse, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
All right, thank you. So we have no unfinished business. However, I would like to take a three-minute break. So we will recess to a break and we will be back.
Questions of staff at this time? Okay, Councilmember Hesse.
I'd like to hear from Michael, you said? Since you've been patiently sitting there.
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor, for inviting us down here and councilmembers.
And I appreciate all the work you guys are doing there. On the baseballs, are they, for your request, it's thirty baseballs. Is that like a thirty boxes of twelve? Or is that actually the price for thirty baseballs? Twenty-seven dollars a baseball or?
I don't have the actual breakdown per, sorry, per unit. I have the total cost. Here, I believe the, the one these, thirty times the twenty-seven seventy of the price, which brought the total to about eight thirty-one.
On packet page two forty-four, it lists the quantity of thirty at the price rate of twenty-seven seventy.
All right, well, the price has gone up a long way since I was out there coaching them. Yeah, that's all I had. I just want to give you time to speak up here if you have anything to add or?
I just, you know, want to say thank you for what you guys have done for us, the mayor. Some of you guys showed up to our opening ceremonies. It means a lot to be, you know, part of the community and be helping the community. And it means a lot to, I think, not only the parents but the kids, to see you guys come, you know, support our ballpark, support our people, support our kids. I think it just means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that argument.
Oh, no, I was just gonna thank you for coming and spending a late evening with us on, shows your dedication to youth sports.
Hi, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ora. I have a question for staff. Do we normally require our leagues to pay for things like, well, in this case, it's a home plate, but that's part of a baseball field? Is that, is that considered baseball equipment and not part of what the city is supposed to be supplying as part of a baseball field?
I would, I'm going to assume that, that the baseball, baseball plates are something that you remove and take with you?
The home plates are stuck in the ground on three different fields. The bases are something we uproot, and they're portable. And also the mounds was also one of the items. Some of those are portable, some of those are fixed.
Yeah.
And I, I know the league does a lot of work in making sure that those fields are ready for play. I just, I just find this kind of interesting that, that the league is having to pay for home bases. But if that's, if that's normally done, then that's normally done. And, and I, I'm not objecting to it being part of the community benefits funding. It's just interesting that we are putting that on the leagues to make that happen.
Well, let's, let us look at that because I, I think that every field should have a standard. And if they want something above the standard, then that's different. But you're right, if it's a, if it's a home, if it's a home plate that doesn't, it's supposed to be there, then they shouldn't provide the home plate. We should be providing the home plate. So we'll, we'll look at that and see if they're getting something special or we should just provide the home, home.
Make, make sure that it's in good working order.
Absolutely.
Is there something that you wanted to say about the condition of them at this point?
We actually already went ahead and replaced the home plates.
Okay.
I don't know if that matters to any decisions.
Well, it, it does right now, but for the future, maybe that's, that's part of a different discussion.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, well, thank you for your work on that.
You're welcome.
All right. I don't have any other questions. Any other questions of staff at this time? Okay, so none, are there any requests to speak on this item? Okay, no? I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Councilmember Henderson made the motion to approve, and councilmember Wilson made the second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Henderson, Hesse, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
Thank you. Item eleven is approval of final map number one eight six zero four and public improvement agreement. We have Public Works Director Alan French.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers. Alan French, Public Works. This item before you is the approval of the final map, one eight six zero four. This item supports the twenty thirty goal, number one, ensuring fiscal viability through development. The applicant and staff have been working to move the map forward since the tentative was conditionally approved back in September of two thousand sixteen. At this time, the map is ready. We have agreements. Bonds are being submitted and should be ready. There's documentation and fees to be paid. At that time, we're, we can move the map forward to the county. At this time, staff is recommending approval of the map, as well as the subdivision agreement, and authorizing the mayor to sign the map, directing staff to forward the map to the county recorder, as well as authorizing the city engineer to accept the improvements once constructed. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
All right, thank you, Mr. French. Are there any questions of staff?
Please.
Councilmember Wilson.
I just have one question on packet page two fifty. On the subdivision agreement, isn't it customary to, to have a final map reference number instead of a tentative map?
Oh, yes, councilmember.
Thank you.
That should be final map, not tentative.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Henderson.
Director French, has the applicant met all conditions of approval?
Yes, all the, the conditions have, all the intent of all the conditions have been made for the improvements, for the conditions. He is posting bond for those improvements at this time to financially secure those.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, if all conditions of approval have been met, then this in effect is a ministerial action of the council?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. If all the conditions of approval have been met, or at least have a bond, which is the case here, the council has no discretion but to award the final map.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? All right, seeing no takers, I'll open it up to public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item? All right, in that case, I will close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Madam Mayor, motion approval, approve final marshal map number one eight six oh four, approve the subdivision agreement, improvement agreement, streets and storm drain agreement, bonds as the improvement security fund. Received the bond documents from the applicant and substantially the form attached. Authorize the mayor to sign the final map mylar's and direct staff to forward the mylar's to San Bernardino County Recorder's Office for Recordation and authorize the city engineer to accept the public improvements upon completion of construction.
I second the motion.
Motion by councilmember Wilson, second by Mayor Protem Robles. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Henderson, Hesse, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
Thank you. Item number twelve, authorized purchase order for procurement of hybrid electric service truck. Mr. French.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Protem and council, this item before you is the appropriation and procurement of the hybrid maintenance truck. It supports twenty thirty goal, number one, to ensure fiscal viability by identifying additional revenue sources. The Public Works Department has an existing two thousand one F-two-fifty king cab utility truck that we use for transporting work release, doing some heavy hauling and towing, and general maintenance activities. Presently, it has a hundred and twelve thousand miles on it. The department has been actively pursuing to replace the vehicle for quite some time. In the recent past, some AQMD money has become available. And since the funding was available, we opted to explore the use of alternative fuels for the department. And the AQMD funding is limited on what we can use the money for, for when we get our allocation. And so the reduction in emissions for the vehicle became a good option. And back in February, the city clerk issued a notice to inviting, inviting bids for a hybrid truck. And it was equal to F-two-fifty. Although we did have four parties inquire for the bid documents, by the time the bids were opened in March, on the twentieth, there was only one bid submitted. At that time, the bid for fifty-five thousand, seventy-four dollars and seventy-three cents was checked and found to be responsible and their bidder responsive. At this time, staff is recommending the appropriation of the AQMD money to cover the bid price and authorize the city manager to execute, execute the purchase order and the necessary documents for an F-two-fifty or equivalent hybrid truck. So I'm happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Director French. Are there any questions of staff? Councilmember Wilson.
Just a quickie. I'm getting, I'm concerned, and more concerned, about sole bids. I understand that we went out with a sta, with a request, a proposal, but I don't understand why we couldn't have, you know, found a couple of more in there. As far as I'm concerned, there should be at least three. And a sole bid is what we seem to get stuck on a lot of times. I don't see a timeframe problem here that, you know, requires us to do this. I do know that we are going to be using money that is set aside for this kind of thing, and that we have limitations on what we can use. And the other question I have is, what about, do we have to have a four-by-four?
Oh, it is in a, let's see.
Are we climbing the hills with this thing or what?
We might. I thought the city was on the side of a hill.
Yeah, it is. But, yeah, I'm not, are we specifying a four-wheel drive?
Yeah, I went through the specs and it said four-by-four.
Yeah, and sir, part of the issue is that the vehicle does transport, and we are, as, as, as we talked about earlier, we do use it for multiple purposes, and that may be, that's how they, they spected, and they were trying to replace the, replace the existing vehicle.
Yeah, that was on page two seventy is the specs for that. And by drive type, four-by-four is printed the word yes.
Okay.
These four-by-fours are notorious for having to be replaced. I mean, the transfer case on them has a tendency to go before the transmission and so on. And we've had pretty good luck with the two thousand one we, we've had. It's just that unless we're planning on pulling tree stumps, I'm not sure if we need a four-by-four. That's all.
Are we, are we planning on pulling tree stumps?
We, we don't plan on pulling any.
Are we going up Blue Mountain?
No, no. We don't plan on pulling any tree stumps out.
And Mayor Protem was asking, do we go up Blue Mountain with this truck?
That is a possibility that we would use it to go up Blue Mountain.
Yeah, to support our hike or whatever.
Well, it is a possibility because there, there is an actual access road there that, that you actually can use to go up there. And, and then if our, our plans occur in the future that we do have daily access, we may, we may actually want to use that for, to go up and, and transport people up and clean and so on and so on. You know, I, I did want to say, if I, if I may, Mayor, that in one of the comments that Councilman Wilson made regarding single, sole source bids, is that we are, our overall goal was to go out to bid to try and get as many bids as possible, try and find the best price. I think what you're going to see happen is that the Ford vehicle that we received does require, has to be outfitted with that hybrid. So I, I think will happen in the end, whatever, whoever we go to is going to go back to the same vendor in order to outfit the vehicle. And so if we get it from Fitz Ford or we get it from somebody else, part of the component, they're going to have to go back to the one vendor that's going to be actually making it a part of the hybrid component of it.
Then I may, may add, if I may.
Mayor Protem.
Omnitrans had a significant fleet request and were only able to get one bidder. And when I raised the issue, and no one else was concerned of all the other cities and the county reps there with the, with the one bid, so by their silence, it seemed to be something that was becoming an occurrence. I don't understand it, but there was, there wasn't a lot of competition.
Councilmember Henderson.
With respect to the comments made about sole bid, I can tell you that I have bid out auto acquisitions for many years, and it is always a struggle to get more than one responsive bid. When I was here earlier as an employee and we purchased some of the vehicles here with AQMD funds, we, we, we submitted our bid packages to twenty-one dealers, even dealers outside the area that had indicated an interest. And we finally received one bid from, I believe, Toyota of San Bernardino. For whatever reasons that appears to be, the nature of the beast, many dealers indicate they're interested in bidding. But when they have to go through the paperwork and the process, their interest diminishes significantly. And, and so, as Mr. Duffy indicated, you have to buy the truck and then you have to outfit it with, with the hybrid system. And, and likely as not, if you go out again, you're going to get one responsive bid. Thank you.
Councilmember Hesse.
You know, first of all, I drive, I'm a truck guy. And fifty-five thousand dollars is not that much money for a truck. You go price trucks nowadays, especially four-wheel drive. I mean, I, I like to have a truck at this price, you know? But like, Councilmember Henderson said, yeah, the problem is, you know, going out for bids and who wants to do it and who wants to do the red tape and put up with the government and everything else. But I think this is a good price for this vehicle, what we need to use it for. Especially being four-wheel driver like the mayor Protem said, we might need to go up to Blue Mountain. There might be something there. We might have to move a boulder that came down and go, I think the last time we used the truck was to move a big old turtle that was running down the street. It looked like a boulder, but, I mean, I, I think this is a good price and on this vehicle, that's all.
Director French, how many, how many car dealers did you seek out for bids?
We had interest from four different dealers, I'm sorry, three different dealers and one outfitter.
Okay.
So there was interest, and we thought we were going to get the competitive bids.
Right, and so only one came back with an actual bid.
And Mayor, also that, you know, this was posted online, and so we had inquiries from those three, four, but it was, it was open to, to multiple.
And we did post it on one of the public bid, public bid forums that are out there.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I just want to finally say as a, you know, a long-term government employee that had to suffer from governing bodies saying they didn't want to replace fleets with, you know, high mileage cars that going up too big bear, that, you know, the power's, steering's beginning to fail coming down, or rear remuters that were broken. And the feeling was, well, that's okay, go ahead and drive it. I don't want to see staff in, in those positions. I want them to have the right kind of vehicle and in a timely, in a timely matter. And I think we did our due diligence on this.
All right, any other questions? Were there any requests to speak on this item? Okay, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Move staff recommendation one and two.
Second.
Councilmember Henderson makes the motion. Councilmember Hesse seconds. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Henderson, Hesse, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
Thank you. Item thirteen is a successor agency item, and it is a approval of success, success. I'll try that again. Successor agencies' last and final recognized obligation payment schedule or ROPS for July first, twenty eighteen through June thirtieth, twenty thirty-four. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair and Board Members. My name is Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager. This staff report supports city goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of revenue receipts and expenditure disbursements, and by requesting sufficient redevelopment property tax funds to pay for agency obligations. So to inform the successor agency board, tonight, we will be presenting the agency's last and final ROPS for the board's approval. We will present refunding and or defeasance of the two thousand eleven bonds for preliminary discussion purposes only. We are not going to request that the board approve that tonight, but we will provide information. We will come back in May to propose a two thousand eleven bond workshop that will include bond counsel, cost of refunding or defeating, future bond capacity, and if so desired, projects for the two million that we will be requesting in our next staff report. So again, for the board's consideration, tonight will be the review and approval of the last and final ROPS. For a quick overview, on November first, two thousand seventeen, the agents, the agency, upon approval by the Oversight Board, submitted its last and final ROPS to the Department of Finance, totaling thirty-four point seven million. And this is for the period of July first, two thousand eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand thirty-four. And the slide in front of the board just listed all our financial obligations. Of that thirty-four point seven, as shown on the slide, the majority is for our debt service of twenty-seven and a half million, seventeen and a half currently for the principal, and ten million in interest. So during this time, we've, we had several phone conferences with the Department of Finance, and we agreed to reduce certain line items based on the limited activity that the agency will be doing once these last and final ROPS are submitted. So based on that, we lowered it to thirty point nine million. And the slide before you shows where the reductions were made. The bulk of them were with the administrative allowance of three point seven million. Now, in addition to the line item reductions, the Department of Finance revised the funding sources to pay, to pay off the obligation payments, specifically the annual debt service. And what they wanted to use as their funding source was the existing bond proceeds. When we originally submitted this, we were requesting that twenty-eight point eight use property tax, property taxes received by the trust fund. And they said, no, can we please use fifteen point three million in bond proceeds and the balance in RPTTF? And that is what is before the agency for consideration tonight. We had several conversations with them, and we had thought that this was an amenable agreement. The difference being, we were not disagreeing that not to use bond proceeds, but we were requesting to delay that a few years forward. Staff believes that should redevelopment law change within the delay period, it may provide the agency access to the two thousand eleven tax allocation bonds and may be able to use that in accordance with the bond covenant or with the redevelopment plan. So in tables four and six of the staff report, all I did was show you the net effect. If the DOF does not agree that we delay the use of bond proceeds, and they still say, no, you have to start in fiscal year eighteen nineteen, over the life of that sixteen-year period, we would, the general fund would receive one point nine million. If we asked them to delay it three years, in two thousand twenty-one, use the bond proceeds starting then, we would receive sixty-three thousand dollars less. Now, this is only with when to use the bond proceeds as debt service payment, nothing to do with refunding or defeasance yet. So at this time, staff is recommending that the successor agency board approve the agency's last and final ROPS in the amount of thirty point nine million with the funding sources described herein, which we were requesting to delay a few years. Should the DOF not agree, we are also requesting that the executive director be authorized to adjust the funding sources if we come to an agreement with the Department of Finance. So just for information, the Department of Finance has one hundred days to review and approve the agency's last and final ROPS. Approval of this ROPS will provide access to the agency of an additional fifteen percent of bond proceeds, which is two million, which will be explained in detail in the next staff report. So after we approve and submit our last and final ROPS, again, this is only preliminary information to consider refunding or defeating the remainder of the bonds after we receive our two million dollars, our fifteen percent. Again, as shown in the previous slides, agency staff is recommending that the, recommending to the DOF that we delay the use of bond proceeds.
Can I ask, just for clarification, the, the request to delay it is because we believe that there is an opportunity for legislation to be passed that would allow us to, to do something more with it?
That is correct.
Thank you.
So what we also did was provide an explanation on the difference between refunding and defeating. Refunding is like a refinance. You are refinancing your bonds with a new bond issue. Normally, this is done when interest rates are lower and we can negotiate better rates to encourage savings. That's basically what refunding is. And it's called refunding if you want to do it prior to the callable date. Callable date. I thought I provided a.
It's there.
You did.
It was there.
It is there?
That's there.
I'm sorry.
That's it.
So the callable dates for both bond issues are two thousand nineteen and twenty-one and two thousand twenty-one. If we were to, normal refunding prior to those callable dates will have a penalty. On tax exempt bonds, which is our two thousand eleven A, we are allowed to do it once without any penalties. Now, defeating is actually just paying off the debt, closing all the bonds and calling it a day. And we don't need to, we can just pay off the debt. We don't need to issue new debt to pay it off. So what then, what we said is our request is to delay the use of bond proceeds. So now the two tables shown in the staff report, now this is if we were to refund or defeat. If we get our approval, if we requested the last and final ROPS, got our approval, got the approval to transfer that two million that we could use in accordance with the bond covenant and defaced immediately after, the amount that the general fund would receive is roughly three point four million. If we were to delay this, two, three years down the road, the general fund would receive nine hundred thousand less than if we would have done it. the general fund would receive 900,000 less than if we would have done it right after July 1st. And as we had mentioned earlier, this is only food for thought. We will be coming back so that the board can decide what to do. At this point, all we are asking is to approve the last and final ROPS. And again, just me to repeat, we will return in May with all of we have stated here. So at this time, staff is recommending that the successor agency board approve the agency's last and final ROPS in the amount of 30.9 million with the funding sources described herein, and delay the refund defeasance of the 2000, no, and delay the use of bond proceeds to 202021.
Vice Chair Robles.
Now, looking at ROPS 1819A, what does that mean? Because what I'm looking at is what table would show the citizens how much interest we've expended on proceeds? Bond proceeds were limited on spending. In fact, we're not able to spend them.
The very first.
If we look at the fiscal, Vice Chair, if you look at Table 8 on packet page 299.
No, not 291.
299. 299 and.
Okay, so on page 299.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Vice Chair. It's in the fiscal impact packet, page 300, your next page.
Okay.
It does say Table 8, but that should have been Table 9.
Perfect, okay.
It's the second Table 8.
So the first year we had the bonds were fiscal year 2010, 11. So there was zero principal interest. Then, I guess mid-year, you, 2011, 12, you had no principal, but you had interest of 896,629. Then I'm just going to go down and say how much interest we're paying, rounded. 1.2 million in 1213, 1.2 million 1314, 1.2 million 1415, 1.2 million 1516, 1.1 million 1617, 1.1 million 1718. And we're projected to pay in 1819 1 million and 1921 million in interest
Yes.
on a bonds that we're not able to have spent more than, what, 285,000? So I'm at a loss on why we want to delay this. We're putting, we're spending a lot of interest on bond principal that we're not able to do anything with. I don't understand why we'd want to delay that.
Again, Vice Chair, our reason for delaying the use of debt service to pay, the use of bond proceeds to pay for the debt service is in the event that we believe that redevelopment law will change. If the agency chooses to come back in August and ask us to defeat those bonds, we can definitely do so.
Vice Chair Robles, and then I'll come back to Chair Henderson.
Well, the reason, because, and I know this gets in the weeds for a lot of people, but looking at the Department of Finance website to refresh myself on this, was the state took the tax increment to start doing the wind down of RDA agencies and their recognized obligations. So we did have some recognized obligations to wind down. But what strikes me about that isn't going to work on holding back is because in that tax increment, to build these 2011A and B bond tax application, in that increment is revenues that were supposed to go to other agencies, including schools. Now, in any new RDA redux, as they're calling it, there isn't going to be any tax increment in any new legislation that's going to allow schools to be impacted. So I don't understand how hanging on for something for two years, it has in its DNA structure of financing, school tax increment is going to be retroactive, or why anybody would go retroactive and say, oh, we're going to bless you, and say you can go forward with your life in expending these bonds. Doesn't make sense to me.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Board Member Henderson, you had something that you wanted to say?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. To echo some of the comments made by the Mayor Protem, the way I see it, this is a fairly simple process. And I appreciate what Ms. Fortune and Ms. Duffy have done with the tables and the graphs and so on and so forth. A lot of work has been put into this. But in my view, it comes down to approving the last and final ROPS and receiving 2 million dollars, and making a determination as to whether or not we should defeat. Now, forgive me if my comments bleed somewhat into item 14, but we need the 2 million dollars as soon as we can get our hands on it, in my view. And the reason for that is we have a fairly significant increase in police services. We have sales tax loss with OneSource relocating to Riverside County. We have the loss of the redevelopment. Once the last and final ROPS is approved, we can no longer access the property trust fund for the 250,000 dollars a year that we've been spending on administrative fees. So that's a cost that would have to be borne, or the staffing costs have to be borne by the general fund. And we have, as Ms. Robles has indicated, an annual interest of at least 1 million dollars. And so what we are asked to consider is the probability of the state, I mean, the new governor in 2020 agreeing to a new redevelopment program. And as the Mayor Protem has indicated, even if such a program were to come about, the impact on schools will not be a part of that program, as the original redevelopment program approved in 1952 contemplated. So if we defeat as soon after the 2 million dollar receipt as quickly as possible, there's a half million dollars a year roughly that accrues to our general fund. Now, the net to us is 250,000 because we have to cover the 250,000 that property tax fund proceeds have done in the past. In addition, we need to make a determination as to how we use the 2 million dollars. I don't know, and I haven't looked into it, I had the opportunity to look into it. I don't know that we are going to be constrained by the bond covenant, because this is a deposit into the general fund. And the implication there is any allowable general fund use, those proceeds, the 2 million dollars can be put to use, regardless, the council would handle the selection of projects for the use of those funds at some future date. But in my view, given what we have, given the constraints we find ourselves in financially, and what we want to accomplish with respect to major projects like the Lewis Pacific Plan, I believe we should approve the last and final ROPS and defeat as soon after as that is reasonably possible, at which time, we have a chance of receiving at least a portion of the 500,000 we will be receiving annually in the second half of this calendar year. And then, of course, the full amount in future years. 2 million dollars can be identified for projects, including Lewis Pacific Plan, and the 500,000 dollars can help us on a day-to-day basis in overcome some of the losses and increases in costs that have impacted the organization. I would venture to say, Ms. Fortune would have to tell me, but I would venture to say that the increase in police services contract alone outstrips the revenue that the city has, the new revenue that the city has realized in the same period of time. So by standing still, we're going back the wrong direction. And we can't afford to do that, in my view. And lastly, and I apologize for being lengthy, we, Mayor Protem and I reported on the Inland Empire vision at our last meeting, and we heard an excellent presentation from a top-level professor indicating why a recession was not anticipated over the next two years on a national basis. It's important to realize that traditionally, the Inland Empire has been the first region in the country into a recession, and the last region in the country to come out of a recession. It's also important to note that the current recession, excuse me, the current expansion is now the second-longest expansion in the history of this country. So the question is not if there will be another recession, it's when. So our window of opportunity, in my view, is between now and 2020. So if we haven't done the things that we need to do on our development projects and put them in the ground and began to realize jobs and property tax and sales tax revenue, we may have a difficult road to hold after the change, not only in the governorship, but potentially the change in the national administration. So those are my comments, Mayor. Thank you for bearing with me. I think we should, again, reiterate, approve the ROPS and defeat as soon as possible.
Thank you, Board Member Henderson. Board Member Wilson, did you have a question?
Well, I guess, without belaboring the issue, it seems to me this is an above-face on where we were headed to begin with, only from the standpoint that I think it was emphasized to us that, hey, if we want to defeat immediately, then it locks us in as to whether our ability of how much we can recoup of use out of these bonds. So the short, and Cynthia can tell us this, but it seems to me that somewhere along the line, we were convinced, when we had our discussions before, that rather than the short-term 2 million dollars, there was a likelihood that we were looking at between 2018 and 2020, maybe even an extraordinary recoup of the use of the funds.
That is correct, Councilmember Wilson. That's why the last and final ROPS, that is before you for review, is deferring the use of bond proceeds to pay for that debt service. I do appreciate the discussion on the defeasance. However, we thought it best if we put that for a different meeting so that all of council can actually review. And like we had mentioned, we can have bond council here. We can actually look at future debt capacity. But for tonight, all we are asking is to approve the last and final ROPS. Whether we go with the DOF suggestion, which is used, started immediately using the bond proceeds to pay for the debt service, or whether they delay the use of bond proceeds to pay for the debt service, Mr. City Manager.
When does that decision need to be made?
Submitting the last and final?
No, going with the suggestion to use bond proceeds to repay versus defeating.
So the only way that the Department of Finance will approve your last and final ROPS is if you agree to use the bond proceeds to pay the debt service. Through our discussions with the Department of Finance, and we had noticed by looking at their website, that there were other cities that got a delay in using the bond proceeds. So we recommend, using the bond proceeds to actually start paying the debt service. So we recommended the same thing. While they wouldn't commit to it, they said that they would review that. So the item that you have before you today is to allow us to submit the last and final ROPS with that, with those years delay. But if they say no, the alternative is to agree to the Department of Finance's recommendation that we use the bond proceeds to pay the debt service, because once we do that, we have the access to the 2 million dollars. If we don't agree to it, we'll continue to do the annual ROPS, and we will just be, and we will not have access to that 15% as SB 107 allows us to.
Okay, well, who's on first here?
Well, and if we agree to what the Department of Finance is asking us to do, and we say we will begin to pay back debt service with the proceeds, does that preclude us from refunding or defeating?
It does not. And the council can, or the successor agency board can come back and decide, have a discussion and decide when the bonds are callable, when they want to, if they decide they want to defeat or refund the bonds. You can do that, you simply have to amend your last and final ROPS.
Okay, so the fastest way to move forward, then, is to, is to agree to what the Department of Finance is requesting us to do?
Yes.
And the other is subject to them coming back and us having this discussion again?
Yes. And so you certainly can put forward a motion that says you want to go with the DOF's recommendation. Or you can put forward the motion to move forward staff's recommendation, giving us that couple-year window. And if they say no to that, then you give the authority to go ahead and agree to their terms. Either way, I think one of those is the best solution if the council wants immediate access to that 2 million dollars.
Any other questions, Staff?
I have a comment.
Okay, I'm going to go with, well, Board Member Hussey, we haven't heard from you yet.
I'm conservative. And I'm looking at this, that's what got my interest. I know we're looking at the ROFF and stuff, but you know, this interest rate is crazy, what they agreed upon. Pretty much, it seemed like we're borrowing from the mob. I mean, you're paying, it's almost 70 cents for every dollar you're borrowing right here. It's crazy. I would never agree to that. I mean, I'm looking at the 2011 bond debt. Let's say if we didn't even have that bond debt, I mean, how much money would be going to our general fund each time? I mean, I get that, you know, what's going on there. But I know we're looking at this other thing, and that just piques my interest on how much interest we're paying, what we could have did with that money, the bond debt. I know we need money for the infrastructure for the Lewis Corporation. And it just seems like all this red tape came on. And I hope to God, when Governor Brown leaves and whoever gets elected, that we move forward on our money, this is our money that we're paying for. But then again, the same governor could come back and say, let's just, I'm going to stay with Governor Brown debt. So it's a lot of thing. I mean, that was just a comment I had. I mean, I'm just looking at the, how much interest we're paying on principal, and I'm just thinking what we could have used that money for. So that's what's piquing my interest.
Did you have a question, Staff, at this time, Board Member Hussey?
No, that was just a comment that.
Mayor, if I might, Councilman Hussey, you know, one of the things that's happened here is because, as Mayor Protem indicated, is that under the redevelopment program, it was your money and someone else's money. And so that, you bundled that together, and you were able to go out. But I did want to make a very important point, and I'm sorry that I did not remember this component earlier. And it's not to negate any of the comments that were made here today, but what's really important is this, the current RPTTF, the proceeds that we have, when we sell property, or when there's more money going into the RPTTF, the school district, or none of the other partners, I'm sorry, the school district, they don't get any of that money. All of that money goes back to the state because the state has guaranteed them their funding component. So when we sell property, the Lewis property for 800,000, and it was carved out, the school district got their 30%, the school district didn't receive any of that money. That went back to the state coffers, because the state has already guaranteed. That went back to the state coffers, and because, because the state has already guaranteed the school district all of the money. This is not extra money for the school district. So as part of the, as part of the redevelopment process, that's how, that's how that, that works. The state has backfilled and guaranteed all of those funds.
Mr. Duff, you didn't, and just to lighten, what has the 2011 bond done for this city? What have we got out of this so far?
Well, sir, I think it's consistent with what I have been told, what Lavco said in the very beginning, when the city incorporated. That Lavco said you don't have the funding sources to sustain the city. So redevelopment became that other funding source. And, and you, and you've done some things, but if you look at the overall amount and the interest that you guys have paid, you don't have the tangible items. But you did, you compiled the property that we sold to the Lewis Group, that was compiled with redevelopment bond proceeds. So you haven't achieved enormous things, but you have remained sustainable over this period of time.
He's talking about the 2011 bonds, not RDA.
That we haven't, that we haven't been able to use.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then you, you, you acquire, you did actually acquire some of the, some of the land, you did a, you did a storm drain study, and it's actually listed in the, in the packet on some of the, some of the proceeds that you, that you actually did spend.
What page?
It's in the next staff report, it's on packet page 328.
Okay, good.
Yes, actually, item 14.
Yeah, so the, the table on that page at the top shows what they were able to expand prior to the dissolution of RDA. And table four at the bottom shows the expense of the $289,000 that we received, the 5%.
And so by adopting the resolution as it is in the staff report, we will be able to gain the use of 2 million more of those, and then we will begin to repay and get out of the business of repaying just the, the interest on bonds we're not using?
Correct.
Is there any member of the public who'd like to speak on this item?
Mr. Jeffrey McConnell. Thank you for filling out a slip.
Thank you. I learn quickly, able to adapt. Jeffrey McConnell, 2175 Walnut Avenue. This obviously has been going on for more than a decade, and I've been attending most of these meetings, and I'm just as confused as when we started 10-plus years ago. So I have some comments, more so than questions. I was watching the presentation, and if I recall the bond, maybe I'm wrong about this bond, it had something to do with, we were rushing to, when Governor Brown stopped the RDA, we, as other cities did, they were trying to rush to get these bonds in. It was for, I thought it was for Michigan widening improvements, infrastructure improvements, which is definitely needed. And then I seem to recall that legislative body or judicial body came down and said, no, no, you can't do that. So I don't, I don't know all the outcomes of that, but I don't see, I'd hate to see us get our hands slapped or anybody else for using money we shouldn't be using, waiting for, the, paying with the bonds for the RDA, the ROPS, I mean, it sounds almost like it was a shell game. That's kind of confused me. So this, that, I believe we're still making payment debt service on the bonds, and then we're using the bond money to pay off another debt, is what I'm getting from this, which sounds really like a shell game. It's just confusing. It's kind of over my head. Accounting is not my number one preference in life. So I'm a little concerned about, you know, where we're heading towards. I don't like, as many of you know, I don't like what the state dictates to us, what we like to do. It's, I don't like paying 70% interest rate on anything. I don't like paying 8% on, on hard money loans for real estate. So yeah, this is a tough call. I hope you guys can figure it out, because it's really over my head. I, I, this, this whole thing troubles me. So if we do get to $2 million, I'd like to see it to go to infrastructure, not to something that's going to disappear in one year. Because if you build infrastructure, more development will come. Build it, and they will come. If you just throw it at something that's gone in a year, I don't, I'm not a believer in that. I've always been a believer in build up the city without overbuilding it, so we can financially sustain ourselves on our property tax base. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during this time? See, no takers, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I'm not through on deliberations.
All right.
I'd like to, Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that we adopt a resolution number 2017-XX, a resolution of the City Grand Terrace Successor Agency, the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Grand Terrace, approving the last and final recognized obligation payment schedule or ROPS covering the period of July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 2034, as required by Health and Safety Code, Section 34177. Also adopt the successor agency's last and final recognized obligation payment schedule for the period of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2034, in the amount of $34 million, wow, $692,383, with the funding sources shown in Exhibit A. And should the Department of Finance, those lovely, not approve the funding sources proposed by the successor agency, authorize the executive director slash city manager to adjust the funding sources, as agreed upon with the DOF, and authorize, heaven help us, submission of the last and final ROPS with adjusted funding sources.
Okay, so there's a motion by Councilmember Wilson. Is there a second or an alternate motion?
I'll do an alternative motion.
Okay.
Adopt Resolution 2017XX, a resolution of the City of Grand Terrace Successor Agency, the Community Realization Agency, Redevelopment Agency of the City of Grand Terrace, approving the last and final recognized obligation payment schedule, ROPS covering the period of July 1st, 2018 to June 30, 2034, as required by Health and Safety Code, Section 34177. Adopt successor agency's last and final recognized obligation payments schedule for the period of July 1st, 2018 through June 2034, in the amount of $34,692,383, with Sunday's sources shown in Exhibit A.
All right, so there's a motion by Board Vice Chair Robles and Board Member Henderson. Is there further deliberation, or does your?
Well, yeah, I wanted to, to, to reframe this.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I think previous city councils across California have been subject to a culture of staff that really loves redevelopment, and they are finding it difficult to change. You know, and I have nothing wrong with doing infrastructure. I support that. The, the, the proponents that have addressed the League of Cities and have come to the league policy committees have discussed, if they're bringing RDA back, it's not going to be the RDA of old. You're not going to go, now, RDA, you have to look, it went, you had property taxes, and they froze the base, and whatever the growth in property tax was, they used that to pledge to, to incur debt and pay back the debt. In that mix were other entities other than the City of Grand Terrace, whose property went into that equation. We've spent millions of dollars on debt service for bonds that we are not able to spend. And now we're like halfway through this, and we're like $9 million down the road in debt, and we want to go two more years to see what was going to happen. And, and, and I know it gets difficult, but I think we need to, to be cognizant of that. And what, what Ken Henderson is saying is that rather than being in this casino of projections or what ifs, we're going to get hard money that we can spend on infrastructure needs that we have. And staff has in their, you know, a discussion of bond council and talking about what our ability to incur debt is, and we can have more solid discussions on that. And that's all I have.
Thank you for your comments. Board Member Henderson.
I'll be brief, Mayor. The supposition, and I understand where staff is coming from, that we should wait to change in governorship and potential new legislation, requires us to believe that in 2020 or later, that the state is going to indicate to Grand Terrace and other communities, look back nine years to 2011, and it's okay for you to spend those bond proceeds. That, that could happen. I don't see it as a probability, and I don't think that that possibility outweighs the submission of the ROPS, receipt of the $2 million, the feasing of the bonds, and the beginning to receive the half million dollars or more a year to the general fund. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mayor, I do want to make it very clear that from the staff's perspective, we don't have a dog in this fight. What we are, what I am obligated to do is to provide you with information. And I would be derelict of my duty if I, if you went ahead and moved forward, and I didn't discuss this other option, that you might, you know, you might want to wait or not. That's fine, but here's the thing, whatever the council or the successor agency board decides, that means the train is leaving, and we are always on board the train. And we will make sure that, because we are policy implementers, you're the policymakers. So I want that very, very clear. We're providing with options, and based on what you want to do, we're on board and we're moving with you. So that, that's all that we provided for you today, was the, the number of options that are available. And it's really up to you, and we 100% support whatever the successor agency board and the council decides.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Board Member Wilson?
I think there's a classical error in characterizing RDA funding as some kind of an, an evil, silly thing that was, you know, diverted funds that were needed for all kinds of other areas. I think any time that the local government can have control of its destiny and money, we're a lot better off than we dump it into the state's hands and let them spread it out the way they do. You know, classic example is what happened to all the money that was going to be paid in, in relation to school stuff, you know, from all this, you know, the gambling that they do. But yet, you know, somehow magically, that disappears. So I, I think, I'm always going to be in support of the idea, however we are able to, you know, go to the state and put our fingers out and hope that they maybe, you know, give us the money that we deserve back, I'm always going to be in favor of local control.
All right. Thank you, Board Member Wilson. We have a motion in a second, please vote.
Well, I, I just want to clarify, one last thing with, with staff and with the, with the public.
Board Member Robles.
Because, again, in all that discussion, we had, and not this city manager, but we had city managers telling city councils that this was their money, and the state was dictating horrible things, and Governor Brown was making us do horrible things. You're free to spend, as a city council, your city's money, which is property tax revenues. Okay? RDA was, was something different. It was a tax increment taking the, the growth and other taxing entities' money with it. What was, you know, what we have to understand, and I think other city managers were remiss in telling their city councils, especially this one, you're a general law city. You're a subunit of the state. So it's not the state telling you blah, blah, blah. This is, this is, you're a subunit of the state. Now, if you want something to be different, you're a charter city. So, and, and I think it created a lot of harm for, and policymakers, when they were convinced that this was their money. And I just wanted, just clarify that. And I just want to, and the reason I'm, I'm fighting so difficult on this is, even though you wanted to give us all the information, wanted to make sure that we weren't going down one road. That's all I have.
All right, so we have a motion in a second, please vote.
Mayor, please, may I, I'm sorry.
Mr. City Manager?
Well, we don't want to rush our deliberations.
I know, but, but we're not deliberating on the item before us. What we're talking about now is...
Well, because you moved us a little faster than we wanted to go.
No, we're looking at adopting a resolution. And again, we're talking about the merits or the, or the agony of redevelopment and city managers of the past, who are not here right now. And we have bonds that we cannot spend. We are taking an action to do something decisively. We're not waiting for the, the state to tell us what to do. We are taking our future into our own hands, and it seems to be that we continue to delay taking it into our own hands, because we want to discuss something that we cannot resolve that happened in the past.
Well, no, it's a substantial item that requires substantial discussion and deliberation.
Past city managers and the direction that they gave to...
Well, maybe not to you, but I was elected, and I'm one, one-fifth of this body.
And I understand that.
That the voters put me here to be able to...
And this is your motion.
You know?
This is your motion, we're voting on.
Because you moved to start going into the motions.
Correct, I did.
And you, and you continue...
Because I was told at the beginning of this meeting that you disliked taking so long, and you wanted to be crisp on items.
Well, no, because I don't want to listen to every consent item from, from other bodies that people attend meetings to.
And I understand that.
Okay, so...
Mr. City Manager, did you have something relevant to this item that is in front of us right now?
I believe that I did, Mayor.
Please state that.
It is my understanding that based upon the motion that Mayor Protim made, it's not consistent with what she actually wanted. If she approves it the way it is, then, then that is staff's recommendation. And staff's recommendation is the three-year, the three-year window. I thought Mayor Protim wanted to go with the, the DOF's recommendation, because it, because if she, if you approve it the way, the way it was, it was motioned, that means if they don't agree with staff's recommendation, we're coming right back here. So staff's recommendation is, is number two, and it's basically to, to, to allow, to allow the, to tell the DOF to wait the three years for, with that amount. And if they say no to that, then I have to come back to you and say, the DOF wants us to, to, to use the bond proceeds immediately.
And I, I thought that was Mayor Protim's...
That's what she wanted, but when she stopped at two, it was actually the opposite. That's the only reason why I interjected.
Okay, City Attorney, can you help us out here?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. At the risk of repeating what the city manager said, the, it's set up so that, that with the three motions, that the state said that you would start paying off the, the bond indebtedness immediately, and then you get, you also get the $2 million. But what, what staff wants to do is try to see if they'll take a deal where we push off using those funds for three years. And so the way it was with all three steps would be that if the state says, no, it's got to be the way we want it, then the city manager would be able to do that, which I, what the city manager thinks is what the Mayor Protim wanted. And so I don't know if that's the case.
My understanding was that she was saying, let's take the Department of Finance's suggestion that the bonds be paid off immediately.
That's, and that is...
Yeah, and that's why he brought this up, is because that's not what the motion is. The motion is to get the three-year window.
Okay, so...
That was also the reason why I seconded it, Mayor. I was under that misimpression as well.
Then it would be my recommendation that if the maker of the motion wants to withdraw it, and the second agrees, we'll have that off the table and maybe start over.
That's the best, I think. I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Would you like to restate it?
I agree.
No, we're going to have him bring it back.
Okay, we're not going to decide on this at all tonight.
Can you refashion on a...
Yes.
Okay. So then do we need to go to item 14 tonight?
No.
No.
We can, the city manager can help you do the next motion.
We can refashion the motion, and you want to do it, Fortune, or I can do it right now. So adopt the...
Are you wanting this to come back to us in written form, so you see it in front of you?
No, if they can refashion it...
Yes. Agency Board, so number one, recommendation number one still stands, and the second recommendation would be to approve the Department of Finance recommendations.
Good.
And then item three is no longer...
Not necessary.
Okay.
Is that a motion you'd like to make?
Yeah, so I'll let the clerk read this. I'll adopt one, and the second is...
Approve the Department.
Approve the Department of Finance's recommendation.
For the last and final ROPS.
Second.
All right, so motion by Board Member Robles, second by Board Member Henderson, and we will have the city clerk read the resolution.
Adopt Resolution Number 2018XX, a resolution of the City of Grand Terrace as successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Grand Terrace approving a last and final recognized obligation payment schedule, ROPS, covering the period July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2034, as required by Health and Safety Code Section 34177.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember, I'm sorry, Board Member Henderson and Hussey voting yes, Vice Chair Robles voting yes, Chair Mcnebo voting yes, Board Member Wilson votes no.
All right, thank you. We'll move to item 14, which is 2011 Bond Proceeds Expenditure Agreement in the amount of $2 million at $26,585. This is a city council and a successor agency item, so we will end up having two motions that need to come out of this.
So, good evening, City Council and Successor Agency. Mayor Protem, Chair and Vice Chair Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager. The staff report before you tonight is the second bond expenditure agreement between the city and the successor agency to submit to Department of Finance. The agreement authorizes the transfer of the additional 15% in bond proceeds to the city for use in accordance with the bond document. The staff report supports city goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability by requesting sufficient redevelopment property tax funds to pay for agency obligations. So, to give a background, the grant, the former redevelopment agency prior to its dissolution issued 2011 tax allocation bonds. Before you is the breakdown of the bonds, shows you the principal, cost of issuance, required reserve. So on a $20.8 million issue, what net of issuance cost, which was highlighted, and required reserve that is not allowed to be spent, only 18.5 is allowed to be spent of those bonds. At that time, the former RDA also developed a project list. The agency's bond issue was less than the infrastructure needs in the project area, so they were going to rely on private capital to fully fund the projects. The next following slides would show what the original intent of this bond issue was. For tax-exempt bonds, they had listed all these particular projects, and for the taxable bonds, which is 2011B, they were to purchase land on the southwest mixed area. And as shown on page 328 of your staff report, as discussed earlier, the first table on the top showed you the total amount of bond proceeds used prior to the dissolution of RDA. So they were able to acquire 14.22 acres in the southwest area, north of Van Buren, east of the I-215, which eventually we had turned over to the Lewis Group.
Sold to, sold to the Lewis Group.
Prior to RDA dissolution, bond proceeds amounting to $1.8 million were used. Now, in September 2015, they allowed the use of 5% and an additional 15% after meeting certain requirements. We were able to get that 5% and to give the agency and the city council an overview. We also gave you all the approved projects that have been used of that $289,000, the remaining project that we will be coming to city council for approval, and what the remaining balance is of that $289,000. So now, as part of the last and final ROPS, because we've met all the requirements, we are also requesting that they authorize us to use that additional 15%, totaling $2 million. So the attached agreement for the board's approval between the city and the successor agency will authorize the transfer of that, of the $2 million in bond proceeds to be utilized in accordance with the bond covenant. The agreement actually states that, that when it's transferred, and SB 107 also states that, they are authorizing the transfer to the city's general fund, however, the funds still have to be used in accordance with the bond covenant. And I think Councilmember Henderson was inquiring earlier. Just thought we'd mention that. So as shown earlier, the original project list was reviewed and updated by existing staff. It doesn't mean that we are tied to these projects. This is always subject to the review and approval of now the city council, because the funds now will be transferred to the city council. So we updated that original list to what agency staff feels still can be used for that, and there are also proposed projects. Again, this is just a potential list, subject to city council approval. So at this time, agency staff is recommending that both the city and the successor agency approve the bond expenditure agreement and authorize the transfer of the bond proceeds totaling $2 million from the successor agency into the city's general fund. That concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, both the council or the agency may have.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Fortune. Are there questions of staff at this time? Mayor Protem, Robles?
Now, I looked at the issuance document, and there was no specific projects named. So really, we're, I mean, and there's nothing wrong with this list, but I just want to make sure the council knows that we have, as long as it's infrastructure, that that falls under the criteria of what we issued the bonds for.
Well, it actually says, "Projects in accordance with the redevelopment plan."
Oh, okay.
So it's actually broader than just...
Much broader.
Okay, so now, plan was pretty old.
Your comment is consistent with that. And the only thing the projects did was the projects that came up with a list to justify the need for bonds. They were not, they were not tied, those projects are not tied to the bond proceeds. You're absolutely right. And what Fortune is saying is that in the redevelopment plan, it's much looser, which gives you a lot more leeway, much more than just those specific projects over there.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Henderson.
Yes, it's important to note that the redevelopment plan included the entire area within the corporate boundaries of the city. The redevelopment boundaries were consonant with the city limits, first and foremost. Secondly, when I made my comment earlier about the limitations on the bond covenant, it was not to imply that, I agree with Mr. McConnell, that we want to use the funds for infrastructure. And as a career economic developer, I can tell you that the installation of public infrastructure is the most significant project producer, job producer in the development arena. And so it would be hard for us to select an infrastructure project that did not comply originally with the redevelopment plan adopted.
Any further questions of staff at this time? All right, seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council and successor agency for consideration of motions.
Move approval of the staff recommendation to the city council and the staff recommendation to the successor agency.
Second.
Mr. City Attorney, do we need to take these one at a time, or can we vote on them at the same time?
I would recommend that you do them separately.
Okay. So I have a motion for staff recommendation by Councilmember Henderson and a second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes with council members Henderson, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor Mcnebo voting yes.
All right, and so those motions carry as board members as well, correct? Motion and second, board members?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so we have a motion by Board Member Henderson and a second by Board Member Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes with council members Henderson, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor Mcnebo voting yes.
All right, and so those motions carry as board members as well, correct? Motion and second, board members?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so we have a motion by Board Member Henderson and a second by Board Member Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes with board members Henderson, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Vice Chair Robles voting yes, and Chair Mcnebo voting yes.
All right, and so those motions carry as board members as well, correct? Motion and second, board members?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so we have a motion by Board Member Henderson and a second by Board Member Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes with board members Henderson, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Vice Chair Robles voting yes, and Chair Mcnebo voting yes.
All right, thank you. We'll move to City Manager Communications.
Yes, Mayor, I'll be brief. And so just very quickly, just remind the council that we are, there's going to be on April the 26th, the Evening Under the Stars is the annual State of the City address with Mayor Mcnebo, and that's going to happen at 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. State of the City address actually starts at 7:00. There would be networking and cocktails at 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the courtyard at 22365 Barton Road. Also, in this month's Blue Mountain Outlook, we have incorporated a, the City of Grand Terrace's Public Works 201718 project list, a list from our LED streetlight intersection program to the improved playground at Richard Rollins Park, the Slurry Seal projects, it's the number of projects that we were able to incorporate. And instead of sending this out direct mail to the residents, we were actually able to find a partner in terms of the Blue Mountain Outlook, which is mailed to every resident in the City of Grand Terrace. In addition to that, on this Saturday, April 14th, we have the grand opening of the city's dog park, and we have some dog park celebrities, some dog celebrities that are going to be there. McGruff is going to be there from San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department, Bogie from the Fiesta Village, and Sparky from the San Bernardino County Fire Department will also be in attendance at the open house. Also for Earth Day, there's the Free Moats giveaway that's going to be occurring on April 21st and 22nd. That'll be posted online and also on Channel 3. In addition to that, we have the art show happening on Sunday, May 6, 2018, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. At the City Grand Terrace Art Show put on by the Historical and Cultural Committee. And also, we are making some improvements to Channel 3. We have added some additional programming, introducing cooking and kids that play immediately after the 2:00 p.m. and the 6:00 p.m. city council meeting. Just to remind the residents that the council meetings will play, the first meeting of the month plays at 2:00 p.m. every day, and the second meeting of the month plays at 6:00 p.m. every day. And with that, Mayor, I'm finished.
Thank you. Councilmember Hussey.
Is McGruff, Sparky, and Bogie going to have the required license? Because I know we put that under orders.
We are working on that, sir.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right, we will next move to recess, to close session. And so I will remind you that the next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 24th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. Agenda item requests must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office no later than 14 calendar days preceding the meeting. Thank you for being here with us tonight, and at this time, we are in recess. Public employee performance evaluation per Government Code Section 54957B, title City Attorney. We gave direct direction to staff. There are no reportable actions taken, and so at this time, we will adjourn. The next regular city council meeting will be held Tuesday, April 24th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. Agenda item requests must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office no later than 14 calendar days preceding the meeting. We are adjourned.